We've stopped talking. No more.
We've got two minutes.
Oh, I thought it was to reserve.
Sorry, I do that so I don't forget.
Okay, you're right, you're right. Oh, good, I just did this secretary. Um, we still can talk amongst ourselves for another minute.
Can we wait a moment?
What should we say?
I had a pillow there, I was screaming. I was like, ah, then I didn't have this. There was a pillow on there. I was like, this is... If I can have someone in on this, let me know if they can hear us.
Is Marina checking them?
Nope. Oh, yeah, Marina, I hear you. That's your bit.
Oh, oh, you have the timer, okay.
Fifteen seconds. And it's six thirty.
Okay. I make a mark and call this meeting to order. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, my turn. Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Spencer, aye. Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightken.
Aye.
Mayor Puma.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, so any, uh, any board members have a conflict of interest or any disclosures?
I have nothing to report.
Nope, nothing to report.
Uh, the only thing I have is that I do know Blake Gian and his mother, just so people know that. So, other than that, no worries. Okay, Dorothea, could you read the guidelines, please, for us?
Okay. All right, the public may speak only during the public comment period of a meeting or if a certain time is the majority of the board allows. Speakers must step to the front of the room. Speakers must give their main address, organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers must not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during the remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body and not to any member thereof. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications. And the destruction of distribution of printed materials or the media must be submitted only to the village board and not to the general public. Private distribution of materials, the materials to audience members, is prohibited.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna start with our public comment.
Can you dig in on that last sentence? The distribution of materials, this one jumped out at me as strange.
This private distribution of materials to the audience members is prohibited.
From whom to who?
For a person attending our meetings to pass out materials to other people attending our meeting.
Ah, got it, thanks.
Okay, um, we have two registered speakers, so Mr. Pierce is first.
Can I come up with?
Yep.
Evening, everybody. Our appearance has been very strange. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'd like to speak to the issue of the guidelines for public speaking by citizens, residents of the village of Pittsburgh. First of all, I understand that the intent of public hearings is to have the citizens or residents learn all the details of an application. Secondly, it's to hear the thoughts and rationale justifications given by the various board members. Thirdly, to provide input to citizens, residents' experiences, their personal experiences to the board, so the board fully understands the implications of any application. The fact that this is being proposed to have any public comment, citizens' residents' comments, prior to even hearing the application, lies in the face of transparent full communications despite people shaking their heads. Also, the whole thing about the board members have a right to questions, comments to applicants, that they have to, excuse me, to the citizens, residents of those, and yet they are precluded, that being the citizens, residents of the village are going to, under this guidelines, preclude the ask of any question, asking many questions of their patients, asking for clarifications, opportunity to correct misstatements by a board members, or even indirectly, intentionally, or unintentionally, statements made. And once again, get a full understanding of it. So, all of this lies in the face of what we've heard that this board is all about. Transparency, communications, involving the community, that stifles the will. Nowhere have I ever heard in my decades' work in presentations, hearing before the boards, towns, municipalities, et cetera, has the public, the citizens, the residents, ever been precluded from raising questions during the application, public hearing period. The only way to communicate here and have transparency that the village trustees can meet about it is to allow the citizens to speak, question, to comment on an application at the time of the application. Any guidelines otherwise would be included, and be in agreement with the clue that, and obviously be in agreement with some responsibility, voted that the responsibilities and obligations of voted elected principals. Always that the board members can ask questions, here again, all the citizens are not asking questions about, again, clarifications. Also, really quickly, written comments, I know my understanding is written comments, by citizens, residents, and into the record, but nowhere do I understand it that the rest of the residents in the community could hear those comments at the time of the hearing. Why they can't be read out versus they can be read here, remains, as me, and once again, lies in the face of communication and input by the community. Zoom meetings versus Zoom webinars. I trust that where I'm a Zoom webinar, webinar, is my understanding, technically, no one knows who is online during that meeting. They cannot hear comments, they cannot see comments.
Excuse me, you have three minutes or up.
All right, I ask for just a summary of my, because this is part of the problem. There is no clock here, so someone doesn't even know when the time is.
There is a clock.
It's a clock before you and not for us to see that. So here again, this is another commentary.
Thank you, no, um, no, thank you.
Unbelievable, unbelievable.
So, to answer that, to address one of the concerns, um, to address one of the concerns, there is a distinction between a public hearing, art, and a meeting. During a public hearing, the public is able to give feedback and comment.
That's not my understanding of the guidelines of the board.
Can we continue with the comments, please? And we'll, we'll, we'll discuss this afterwards. I think it's important that we hear from other people that signed up.
Yep, um, Robert Corby.
I want to make two points.
Name and address, please.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue. Among 28 years serving as mayor, I attended multiple training sessions in the New York Conference of Mayors. One of the general principles that was articulated in every one of those training sessions is that one of the key advantages of village government is access for the people to the governmental process. Restricting comments and reducing the public's opportunity to comment on pending issues in a meeting takes that away and extinguishes the long tradition of this village that I was proud to be liberal in the allocation of public comment during my tenure. I'm very disappointed to have this happen tonight, and I don't, haven't heard any logical explanation for the draconian restrictions that are now being introduced into village board. And I ask you to reconsider this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Up, yes.
Dave Ferris, my son, I don't know how someone can comment before the meeting on issues that are gonna be discussed during the meeting. I'm not clear of when, so how can someone respond and make intelligent comments not having heard a discussion and thoughts by this board, which I, you know, view as taking very seriously? I think we should look at the Mount of the Towne Board. They allow comments after every substantial issue before the vote. And at the end of the meeting, public comments on any subject. That, I agree, that the timing should follow an agenda item, but at the end, it should be open ended for people on that issue. How would you know what concerns are? Would it be racial act leak? Would it be arguing? How will we know that if you don't let people speak and it's not on the agenda? You shut off the input from neighborhood and the residents, and that's what we're supposed to be about. So, I want the board, I think it's best to set the policy aside, decide what is what we're trying to accomplish, rather than working something and coddling to get a, so I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak?
I have a virtual.
Okay. Name and address, please. Yeah, give us a minute.
Hi, this is Emily Diaz at 81 South Street. Um, so I appreciate this update to the public comment guidelines and appreciate, you know, efficient meetings, but I would echo some of the concerns being, um, displayed here tonight, that I think there is value in having comments at the, at the end of the meeting as well as at the beginning, so we do have an opportunity to respond to things that are discussed at the meeting. Um, I do have a question, clarification question. If the public comment is at 6:15, but the meeting starts at 6:30, will those be part of the public record? Are we, like, officially changing the, when the meetings are starting going forward? Um, also would like to see language about, um, how public comments can be made virtually, since our meetings, at least for the foreseeable future, will be via Zoom. Um, that I always saw language about in-person speaking. Um, and yeah, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, thanks. Uh, just, I can quickly answer Emily's question about the comments beginning at 6:15. Um, nothing's been adopted yet in terms of changing the existing policy, and it was on the agenda, you know, for discussion later, so.
I want a clarification on that. Um, if we haven't adopted anything yet, we're using those rules to cut people off at, at three minutes, how, where did that come from?
The guidelines that you read, one that they adopted, the ones that she read.
There were two guidelines for the village were adopted in 2016. Three minutes has been the standard since, I can go back to 2014 for the public to speak.
So, so if everybody understands, the guidelines that Dorothea read prior to us, uh, opening up the comments were adopted in 2016 by the previous administration. So, that's, that's what we're following. Yes, any other comments?
Yes, we do. Ms. Edger, she wants to speak.
Yep.
I'm getting myself.
Name and address.
She, I'm sure she, oh, there she goes. Go ahead and give your name and address. You're free to speak.
I have to say, but yeah.
Ms. Edger.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just here to listen.
Oh, oh, you raised your hand, so I'm sorry, I thought you needed...
No, sorry.
Hi, Marty, okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No, at the moment.
Okay, all righty. Um, I would like just to address a couple of things, because some questions did come up. The 30-minute public comment period was implemented years ago. And these are the guidelines that we've read, so this hasn't changed. Um, I'd like to just finish up here, if I, if I may, and address some things, because I, I know this has really been, um, somehow agenda, and I just want to be really clear. I think it was in, and I wanted to get the, the date right. Dorothea, you may have the correct date of when there was an actual 30-minute period prior to the meeting, and that was implemented, I believe, in October of 2014.
Correct.
Uh, so that lasted for five months and was dropped in April of 2015. So, really what we're doing is we're circling back, we're reinstating, uh, hopefully, a half hour of dedicated time where we can listen, I'd like to finish my comments, please, I see that you're there, thank you, where we can listen to the public. Um, all of the questions that you write in, every single letter that you write in, or email, anything, any phone call, becomes a matter of the public record, and certainly the attorney can correct me if I'm incorrect about that. Um, you're, you're more than welcome to weigh in on anything. So, what this is, this half hour, is simply reinstating something that was in place years ago and had been dropped. Now, the other part of this is, when I was on the board, uh, as a trustee, um, we initiated what was called coffee and conversation, and that was yet another opportunity for the public could just casually and formally talk about issues and topics of the day that were important to the village. And as I said, I think it was either the last meeting or the one prior. Uh, my intention is to reinstate that. I think that's a good way for us to engage in an environment that's a little more casual, where we can really have a better exchange and get the feelings from our residents. And so, my intention is to reinstate that in September. Um, and again, I also have made the recommendation to the trustees as well, um, to hold even office hours, just even a couple hours a week, so, um, our residents can reach out and have direct conversations and connections. So, um, I see this actually as an opportunity, really, to, um, not exclude people, but actually, it's more inclusive. And so, I, I don't know how the misinformation came about. Um, I see this as something positive, and the three minutes has, has been in place for, for a number of years. So, also, I want to just read again the very, very first sentence of these guidelines that were, that were adopted in 2016. "The public may speak only during the public comment period of the meeting, or at such other time as a majority of the board allows." That's always been the case. That's never not been the case. And there's no reason to not to, to even drop that guideline. So, again, this is about being more inclusive, not less exclusive.
Let's go.
And I was gonna say, is there any other comment there?
Um, I have no other comments.
Okay, we already heard from Mr. Corby, yes. Ms. Graham, did you have a comment? Did you state your name and address, please?
Lindsay Burnout, 75 Sixth Street. I, uh, what is many of these meetings, and I've never, ever heard something cut off mid-seven to three minutes, like it's a Nazi regime. I mean, I understand the three-minute rule, but to say, okay, your time's up, your time's up, stop, 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 that's not friendly. And I think it would depend who was standing here, and the two of you were, were the two that said, stop, 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 wouldn't stop, stops, of your party people. And so, I don't like to see that, and I don't like to see with, with any party or any belief system to be cut off at the minute of strike and midnight sentence. Wrap it up, you've got 20 seconds left, or something that shows some sort of respect for human beings coming out here, which I loathe for our, and for really anybody who wants to speak. That's my only comment, but from my vantage point there, my heart started beating out of my freaking mouth to see those two people right there. No, you're done, no. It's not, it's not, it's not friendly, and it's not our board.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that, yeah, I can, I appreciate that.
Sorry, I understand that, uh, Robert Corby would like to speak again, and based on the rules we're operating under, it seems that if the majority of the board feels that he is able to speak, then he would be able to speak.
And making a motion?
And making a motion that we allow Robert Corby to take floor against him.
Okay, I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Trustee Lantheer.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
No.
Trustee Lightken.
Aye.
Mayor Puma.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a point that Mayor Puma spoke to. Um, we did have those guidelines. They were used because during that period, we had a number of long public hearings on issues like 7511, where we needed to have some way to distribute the comments and accomplish a meeting within a single meeting. However, the administration of that policy is what has changed drastically. As any of you that have attended meetings during my tenure noted, I was very lenient in allowing people to talk. And I think particularly when there are complex or complicated issues that aren't well understood, giving the public the opportunity to comment, ask questions, is intrinsic in good village government. Uh, the, the policy that you are proposing is much more restrictive than the new policy. I met with Stephanie Thompson yesterday, and I know the policy that the town of Pittsburgh has adopted. Why is the village, with only 1,500 residents, when all leavers here, adopting a policy that makes it more difficult to speak on topics of meetings than the town of Pittsburgh, which has a population of 30,000 people? It just doesn't make any sense, and it doesn't represent good governance. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess, the policy that we're talking about is the one that was adopted in 2016. And, and the only thing we're doing is bringing back the 30-minute public comment. So, um, I'm not quite sure where this is going. I mean, this, this also was derivative from, um, a memorandum that was put together by our village clerk and the attorney in terms of what do other villages do? How can we accommodate people and still be able to transact our business in an, in really an expedient way and an efficient way? Um, so, I really think this is nothing more than just simply revisiting and re-implementing guidelines that were passed under your administration, so. Uh, you already had an opportunity to speak. Um, I make a motion to allow Dave Ferris to speak, and then we will close out the comments unless there's somebody else who wants to speak. Yeah.
No, second.
Were you saying, yeah, I made a motion, yeah, so slowly seconded.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lan, yes.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
No.
Trustee Lightken.
Aye.
Mayor Puma.
Aye. My, the reasons for my no votes is, we've already heard, and we haven't even discussed this in the board yet, so.
Well, that's, that's the point I want to make. The major flaw is, this is not the same as before. Public comment section at the beginning, without comments on any subject. The town board had the same policy. It's flawed for both boards, so both boards moved the public comment section to the end of the meeting for any broad topic that wasn't on the agenda. But this requires comments only on the agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. And you just made my point, Dan, directed in the discussion yet, to understand where people react to it. The town board, after the discussion, would then have comments from the public before the vote to consider or question a person if you chose to. So, that's not the same policy to say, comments, yes, but they're only to the agenda items. It's ridiculous, and I'm not, I'm not clear of when. I can't read your minds for all the agenda items and give comments before the discussion occurs. So, there should be a public comment section at the end for topics that were not covered, and as I said, the town board had the same trouble. People filled up the front end of the meeting, not the business of my agenda, and it moved it to the end to accommodate, just like you have trustee items, you can add to the end after the formal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I actually think you raise a really interesting point, because that certainly was not addressed in the guidelines that were adopted in 2016, about having just open public comment at the end of the meeting for, you know, like, another half hour. So, that may be something that our board would want to revisit, and I think you raised a very valuable comment. And again, I do want to reiterate, um, we're here, whether it's by phone, you want to have an individual meeting, you know, we're always here, we're always ready to listen, whether you just want to simply send in comments or whatever. Um, so, Dorothea, is there anybody else online, or we're just gonna close it out and continue with our agenda?
The only thing I will come forward is, we did, we did receive written comments from Michael Reynolds. I did pass those on to the board.
Yes, thank you, I'll review that.
Add it to the record.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna continue on with our agenda. And the first item is going to be the building inspector report, and he's camping.
We're sorry, we'll be revisiting the policy as trustees, which is a later visit.
Yes. Yes.
I had a couple of questions on that. One was, um, to his comment about outdoor seating. At our last meeting, the planning, the determination was that we'd have the planning, and we'd recommend that they, that copper leaf go to the planning and zoning board. My question is, were, was copper leaf and the planning and zoning board told of that?
I have not had a conversation, I can't say if Steve did. It was a workshop meeting on outdoor seating, so I'm extra...
Yeah, we wouldn't have that information at this point, and as I said, Steve will be back next week, but we should follow up.
We can follow up.
It's a good thing to follow up on. Thank you for that. Wow, it's, you know, he's not here really to answer the questions, but we can make a note of, note of the questions. But did anybody else have any other questions on this report?
The, the other question that I have for him, and I could follow up with him, is, he processed five different requests for zoning compliance, and, and just the severity of those. Were those a big deal, or were those minor things that he was able to solve, and that's a question for him.
Yeah, I can...
I think we would have heard, you know, it turns out to be a lot of them. Okay, next up, uh, the DPW report. Good evening.
Does anybody have a question, because I have two.
I do.
But you go.
Um, I have a question about the, um, the railing on here that you mentioned here. Do we, do you have any more information about when the Canal Corporation might be buying?
Actually, I think Alicia probably talked about it.
Yeah, no, I was gonna jump in on that, yeah. Um, we, we did get a response from Canal Corporation, and we were delighted with that. Um, I had a direct conversation with the regional engineer for Canal Corporation. Um, and as of this week, um, he has escalated, uh, this issue to his department head. They recognize that there is an erosion problem, and they are putting their engineering team on it to re-engineer it. And so, uh, they'll be getting back, you know, I have a little more information. This is just the first brush, when you just wanted to say, hey, we've got this, we, we recognize it and acknowledge it. So, um, I think what the next step would be is just the initial plans of what they're looking at and how they're going to address it, and I think they're looking at, um, sort of the immediate solution, and then perhaps a longer-term solution. So, that, that was essentially the gist of the conversation.
Which is good, if they could do something before winter time, it would be...
Yes, and that, that is their intention. They have escalated the issue.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And also, I just want to say, too, um, they, they gave, uh, high fives and props to the DPW for putting up that fence in, in recognition of public safety, and they were appreciative of that.
Great.
So...
They respond quickly.
Yes.
When they appreciated enough, they could pay us money for it.
They gotta pay that. Exactly.
It didn't need to cry out for it of being invisible, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I had another question. I have two. Um, one is the northern people on Bowton and South. What, uh, we talked about the wood being made available to people to use. What, what did they do?
This is a different trick.
Okay, different tricks, yes, okay.
And we'll, we'll get to that, sure.
Okay, fine, and then, the other question might be for you, Renee, but you said, working with Nysdod on 9631 Road Projects later for 2022. The question I have there is around the, the crossing that they were gonna put in, and is that still a part of the plan?
Uh, which crossing?
The one, uh...
At the bridge?
No, the, the one down, really outside of here.
Across the street from here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have not convinced them to put it in yet. We just had a meeting with, with them, and we, this, uh, I think we're gonna probably cover that at our next meeting and kind of dive into everything, and we kind of get back to us on some of the issues, and after we have SRF look at everything. But no, that one that we have proposed for years, you're talking about right here in front of four...
Literally right here.
Yeah, and then there's one near the dairy, too, right?
Yeah, that was still happening as part of a PS application that was, um, I wish that was last year, then I think we reported on that. So, that one is still happening, the one, uh, the rapid flashing beacon in front of Shane Place is still happening, too. Shane Place and North Main Street, but we have not convinced them that we need, uh, that they're, you know, they say the warrants aren't there for the one in front of, for the park, and we just...
Yeah, and I believe at that meeting, we asked to see, you know, what, what data they used and how they came up with that decision.
Yeah, to justify a 600-foot-long left turn lane versus a mid-block cross.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're now looking at that long left turn lane as, you know, a point of contention. As long as I've been on the board, as long as I've been with Chair, I think, how the board's been pushing to get rid of that turning lane. But, um, they didn't have it in the current restriking plan. Um, that's one of the things that SRF will underscore there, too. And we convinced them that that's not needed, because it's super long, and I think that'll give us better, um, a better chance for getting across there. Because of my answer.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, any, any other?
Not till we get to the quotes.
Well, let's talk about the speed centuries.
Okay. So, basically what it says in my, uh, report, um, just needed determination whether you guys wanted to go with fixed-in-place units that are solar-powered versus ones that can be moved around to different poles, different... versus ones that can be moved around to different poles, different locations around the village. Complete package for the solar powered units are about sixty-four hundred dollars. And that's going off of state contract pricing. And the mobile units are roughly around three thousand dollars per unit. So I think we have eleven thousand dollars budgeted for that.
Eleven thousand?
Yep. If we went with two solar units, it would be just over what is budgeted.
Then we can't move those.
Yep, so you'd have to find good permanent locations for them to sit for the rest of their lives.
And so you were talking about the fact that with the portable ones, they have to come back. You have to move the entire, how heavy is that?
It weighs about thirty pounds. It's a box maybe. It's movable.
And we could get four?
Yeah, so again, we're going to be just over what was budgeted.
Roughly within our budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could get four of those and we certainly could rotate out. I don't know if you folks recall, we took about a day or so to recharge one.
Yes.
So even if we had three out and then one recharging and recycling through.
Yeah.
We still would have it, one, the element of portability. And, you know, certainly three out there at any given time.
Yeah, and each one of these for three thousand dollars would come with an extra mounting racket, so.
Oh, okay.
Better for swapping out locations. So I could have, if we had four units, you know, throughout eight different locations, plus the one that we have that rotates between six different locations every other week or every week. I think that you'd be able to cover a pretty good chunk of the village blocking speed.
Now, there is something that you said about people getting used to seeing them. So that's another consideration for having the mobile ones. Yeah. Yeah.
I was wondering if it's worth having at least one solar that just kind of stays put. But, so I kind of wanted to get thoughts on that.
And hybridize it.
Yeah, do like one, at least one solar that you know in a place that's super.
Consistent.
Yeah. And I know all the data that it's better to, you know, people habituate, so it's better to move them around. But I know Brighton has one on Highland that they've had there for years. And, you know, it still is an indication, still is a signal to people. So I don't know how anyone feels about doing one solar.
Yeah, I think that might be a good sort of, you know, solution to kind of hybridize a little bit. Yeah, sure.
Just a question for Zach. So it seems like you can get an extra battery for the other units too. And you might be able to leave that in place just by swapping out the battery. Would you prefer, what would you prefer to work with?
These are, I'm sorry, these are sealed units. So to recharge, if you can't just take the battery out, you can replace the battery, but it requires like separating the greasing on the unit. So to charge these, you actually have to physically remove them, bring them to a twelve volt source, plug them into a wall socket, pretty much, and let them charge anyway. The one that we have currently is you can open it up to access the battery, which have two batteries. And that's what I do is I just change the batteries out. It stays in place for that week. And, you know, it's a lot simpler that way and it can stay out there.
Can you remind me how many we currently have?
One.
We just have the one.
Yes.
And what, for, I was trying to figure out how to stay within the eleven, eleven thousand today when I was doing different scenarios and it says doesn't include freight costs. Do you have any idea what like a ballpark of what that would be?
Um.
For that heavier unit. I'm assuming that three thousand dollars, that we'll run into the same problem, right?
Yeah, it kind of depends on where all the material is coming from. If it has to be shipped to their warehouse and then shipped from their warehouse to us as a complete package versus.
Are we talking five hundred extra dollars?
I would say probably a couple hundred dollars anyway. Yeah.
So what, you're thinking maybe like a one solar, two battery?
Well, that would take us over our budget.
Yeah, what a special trade.
Yeah, yeah. So if we do one solar and one, one regular, that's, you know, right at around ten K if we round up for the, so.
At least to get us going.
Yeah, and that would give us three feedback signs.
Yeah, we'd have three total.
Yep.
Can I make a plea that if we're ever going to go over a budget on anything, this is the place to do it. This is the number one problem we have in the village is speeding. And this is one of the things we can do to mitigate that. So going over by a few hundred isn't, or even a couple thousand, isn't a major concern on my end at least.
So the big question is, do we want at least one solar? Because if not, then, you know, it's easier because it's less, it's less maintenance for you all, right?
Yeah, once it's up, it's pretty much up.
Pretty much.
It's going to be a sustainable one. Right, right, right.
I think the town, the towns had a couple of theirs up for a couple of years now and they said they had no issues with the batteries dying out or anything. It just, it always runs even in shade. It just, you know, it works.
Through the winter?
Yep.
And I would think state coming into the village would be the place to put that. As a permanent fix.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a biggie.
With the new crossing, that would probably be a good idea.
Yeah. So what, one solar, two stationary or two battery?
Or one and three.
One and three, just go for it? So what, how much, let's see, two two and math, how much over are we?
Well, three.
How much more money?
Three K would be ten K, obviously.
So we're over, yeah, so we're up to fifteen, so we're three over.
And what about two, two mobile in line?
Two or one?
Yeah, because that would get us three mobile.
Some more next year.
Yeah, or if we get, you know.
Yeah, you can always get more.
Yeah.
We also may find out we don't, like, there's, you know, we would rather have a different brand or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true too. That's a good point. Yes, Dorothy, you had.
If you were intending to go over the line, what I would say is with the motion, just make a point to we have Mary transfer, Brooklyn transfer some money from.
Right.
The contingency into that line to cover the village.
I would advocate to go over, we've, we go over on things all the time. This feels like the best reason to do that.
I feel like that'll give us four to three mobile and that feels like a good, good piece of shit.
Is there a motion?
I want to point out that the terms and conditions for the three thousand dollar one is just ridiculous.
Did you guys read them?
I don't think it's negotiable.
Yeah.
I mean, ridiculous.
Unless you want to apply to Kansas.
Legally.
Yeah.
I have a motion.
I've seen words. I've probably drafted by me.
To purchase two of the mobile units at three thousand dollars and one of the solar unit at sixty-four hundred.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a second? The vote please.
Are you also authorizing?
They need to be a separate motion or?
I think you can combine it, just that you authorized the original lines to be transferred.
My motion and I also make a motion to, gosh, what is that going to put it? So I don't know the amount, but it's about a thousand dollars.
To transfer, transfer the additional funds from the contingency.
Can it be that ambiguous?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Grab the, the additional funds over the budgeted amount.
There you go.
Over the budgeted amount. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Lampier?
Hi.
Trustee Spencer?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Lankett?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
Motion accepted.
We got, so I'll work on getting those in. You guys please come up with a location.
Great.
All right.
We have some.
You're all good.
Yeah.
What else?
If you guys don't have any questions, I just have one question. Brad Van Bortle has retired. So last Thursday, he, yeah. He's been here for eight years now and he was just ready. His body, you know, was not getting any younger and it was just time for him to move on. So the last two weeks, this week and next week, he's taking vacation time. And then as of that, he'll no longer be employed with the village.
Yeah, he kind of didn't want any fanfare, I think.
Yep. Yeah, I didn't find out till last minute. He begged Dorothy not to have anything for him.
Oh.
So far, he's essential.
Yep.
Trying to get him back for a little staff lunch, but.
We'll see. We'll see. Yeah, we'll let you know if we can, you know, just to wish him well for sure.
So I will be putting on ad, probably the beginning of September, trying to narrow down what we're looking for in a new employee and.
Think about that.
Yeah, so got away some options.
Those are big shoes to fill. He's a really good guy.
Yeah, and I don't think, you know, we're ready to bring in someone else that has experience. I think ground up is, you know, what we're kind of leaning toward here. We haven't really had much luck with, you know, having the experience in the background or, you know, having.
So we'll get on that though.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to consider this and, I don't know, hopefully by early September, we'll have something sorted out.
And then we also should talk about the oak tree and what's going to happen potentially with the wood.
Yes, well, I don't have any answers.
Oh, you're meeting at that, okay.
Yeah, so we're going to be meeting Thursday morning to discuss terms and what we're going to be doing with the wood versus what the contractor is going to be using the wood for. But we are going to hopefully be on schedule for the mid to end of September to start cutting the tree down.
Yeah, and also just the meeting with the woodworker is really about the fact that he is going to be getting some of the wood from the tree. And it's not that we're just simply giving him the wood. It is what do we get in return? Is there somehow, you had mentioned a percentage, Jeff, I believe?
I think the problem is you got, you don't know what's usable.
Yeah, until we get into it.
So you base it on percentage of what's usable and, you know, you figure that out.
Yeah, so those are the kinds of things we really want to make sure it's clear enough, you know, on behalf of the village, how this will be.
Is he going to quote somewhere?
No quote. That's what we're trying to figure out, just in agreement to provide for the village in the soil for himself and no cost.
I'm looking in the village right away.
There's a cost associated with taking the tree down?
No, no, I understand that. So what I was thinking is we could sort of import from the right of way permit a lot of which would protect the village. We could build into that, but we decided to do our way of the manipulation. I'm trying to figure this shit. But we'll need to know exactly what to do.
I think it may take maybe a few different conversations to really narrow it down.
Yeah, but we'll initiate it. We'll still get it going and Lily, hopefully you will be in on that meeting as well, which would be great.
Kind of call.
Okay, great, great, okay.
So in my purpose is to draft a thing, I need tied down, who's going to pay what? So we'll get out of it, the details.
Okay.
You know, maybe what we can do, part of that meeting is you and I'll have another conversation and we'll make sure we're hitting those specifics.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it has to be a big deal. It's just has to be laid out.
Just, just so it's clear for everybody. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or is the village prepared for any costs that it would have to assume for his services if that's what he's asking?
He hasn't so far.
No.
He's asking for the lumber. He is getting the lumber.
He knows what he's getting, but.
Right, that was my understanding from the.
As Jeff said, depending on how much lumber is available due to rock or whatever.
We're all assuming some risk, aren't we?
Yep.
You know, but.
To be determined.
To be determined, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Well, you know, make sure we can work it out. Yeah, yeah. What else?
So.
Any other questions or?
No, I, we are going to be starting crack scene tomorrow. We ran some equipment from the town and so the twelve thousand dollars, I think I budgeted for that should be substantially less by the time we actually get done with it.
That's where we found the money for the centuries.
That's what I was thinking.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Well, we're going to start tomorrow and hopefully get South Street done and then move on from there. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up, Jeff?
I don't know if we were planning to talk about this somewhere else or Dan sent around an email about the marijuana relations.
We should talk about that at some point.
You want to, I can cover that one where you want. Dorothy, I have a word out of the timeline, but I've answered, you know, I sort of answered some of your questions. I thought the biggest question you had was whether or not, well, I am intuitive in question, whether or not you could do some kind of official referendum, just wondering what the public wanted. We can't do that.
Okay.
So, you know, the choice is if you want to hear, if you want to absolutely hear from the public, you have to opt out of something.
One of the two.
And then if you absolutely want to hear from the public, you'd have to on your own motion, send it to a referendum.
Okay.
An alternative to that would be to do your own advanced exploration meetings, charrette meeting, whatever you want to do. Then you may not have the expense of having a referendum. But if you do it on your own motion, it's going to cost you money to do the referendum.
Yeah.
And since we're not having a bill of election this year, there's no way to really finesse lining it up at an election. So you have to make a decision about how you want to hear from the public.
Okay.
You may hear from the public anyway if you opt out and there's a petition file.
Yes.
But you can't, you can't control whether or not there's going to be a petition filed.
And one thing I think that's important to bear in mind, we don't have to have the referendum before the end of the year.
Right.
So, you know, in other words, we could set that up, you know.
So the rough timeline I was thinking about is it's got to get moved to public hearing and have a closer for a public hearing in November. Because you really don't want to wait until somebody.
Yeah.
If you're going to do it, whatever you do.
And that public hearing would cover the opt out decision.
We covered a local law opting out of anything that you wanted out of it.
So that's good news. What, everything that you just said is good news and validates the idea that we had around this table. Was it last week or the week before?
Last week.
Last week. So to recap that, just so, I want to use my own words so that you tell me if I'm right or wrong. We could send it to, set a public hearing, make a determination at that public hearing whether we opt out of one, both, or none.
That's obvious.
Okay.
In October, you would have to make the decision about what you're sending to public hearing.
Okay.
It could be two local laws, one to opt out of the lounge, one to opt out of retail. And then you could in November, up or down, one or both of those local laws.
Okay. And at that, could we, at the same time that we're having a public hearing, send it to referendum?
Yes.
Okay, and that could be months away and that's okay?
There are time limits. Don't ask me exactly what.
It's sixty and then?
Well.
Yeah. It happens within at least sixty days.
Those are different timelines. When you move something, you go ahead. I probably know more than.
Okay, once you, if you pass the local law, let's say you set the public hearing in October, you have your local law in November. When you adopt the local law, that's when you would send it to referendum. You have within sixty to a hundred and twenty days to have that referendum, is my understanding. And I would double, I would double check those.
I'm not going to say that's the right time, but there is a timeframe.
There's a window.
But you have to pass the local law.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then when do we, how should we take the next step to have the discussions about what we are proposing to go to public hearing in terms of opting out of one, both, or none?
I assume you want to gather public input. You have another workshop. You could, whatever means and mechanism you want, make sure you hear from the public that you feel would be affecting you to hear from the public.
I think it would be more than one thing, you know.
You are, you all are better at that stuff.
Yeah.
But we need to, if we are going to pass the local, try to adopt the local law, we need to set that hearing date in October, is what you're saying. You don't know the specifics, but.
No, 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 and that's a firm date. Well.
October what though? October.
I would say by your second meeting in October.
Okay.
So what we're trying to remember, November's got Thanksgiving.
Right, you have to listen. You go to one meeting in November, you go one to December. I'd say the first meeting of October.
Okay.
So. But in October, on that Oc- October meeting, you need to have a local law. Move to public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the part of it, so we're saying the first.
So that's September's, you know, September's.
When we need to work on.
September's next month.
Well, for like one week.
I mean, it's here.
And that's really where, when we need to work on this.
Yeah, really, really.
You're, you're, you're at the end of summer now, so people are not gonna be at all that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
Oh, Jeff, the, the other follow up question, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, the other follow up question I had was, he just made an assumption that we wouldn't get one of the twelve um, distribution centers, we're calling them for one of it. Yeah. Uh, that may or may not be true, I don't know, but should we take an action about that?
You, you can't have thought of that.
I don't.
I guess, that's the state, that's the state deal.
It's all state controlled.
Okay, so we're only opting out or in to lounge or retail dispensary, okay, thanks.
Yeah. Confused. Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any other things you wanted to, okay, let's. Uh, treasurer's report? Please.
Can I uh, ask a question about the agenda, we have a few people in the room and we don't have public hearings, but we have applications, I wonder if we could address their issues before we get to some of our other stuff?
Everybody okay with that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Just, just to have, you know, we have people over here that are waiting to talk about, you know.
Yeah.
Special permits, you know, so. So maybe just.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, mix up the agenda a little bit here.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody okay with, okay, yeah, I think that makes sense, thanks Jen for, for bringing that up, because everybody's been very patient out there, so uh, why don't we skip down then to special permits? Uh, first one up, Bonnie Jean Han, skincare. Hello, how are you?
You wanna sit up to your Bonnie, that's fine, I just, you know, yeah, that'd be great.
How are you?
I'm very well, how are you today?
Good, good.
We're occasionally moving, so certainly.
Why don't you tell us, so um. I'm speaking of skincare, only crazy, I have.
Yes, very good. Um, so I've been an esthetician for eighteen years and I wanna open up my own business um, over in Northfield Palms. Um, uh, there will be three estheticians there. Um, you know, everyone that's gonna be there has been experienced as well. Each appointment lasts about thirty minutes to two hours at the most, so it won't really be like where people are parking for hours on end, you know, it won't disrupt or take up a lot of parking. Um, there'll be, you know, services, personal services, and retail.
Okay. I'm excited.
Yeah, I'm very excited.
Which building are you in exactly?
I'm building J, so the same building that Notion is in.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the Taylor.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was gonna ask the same question, I wasn't sure. Any, any thoughts, permits, I mean, I think it's great, no, wonderful.
You were from Park Hospital, huh, right?
I did for many years, yes, yeah. I was looking at it, I thought.
Yeah, my son still gets his haircut from Brooke.
Oh, wonderful. I am telling you, it's always two degrees of separation in Rochester, a hundred percent, yes. I know. Um, is there, are there any questions you have for us, not that I can think of at the moment.
I do have one question, Bonnie.
Sure.
Is there anything among the products that you use that might be considered um, an odor or a hazard, you know, they have, around the hide or anything else?
Nothing like that, no, the majority of the skincare that I use is, it's clean beauty, um, the most like aggressive products that I use um, are like chemical peels, but even with that, you don't, it doesn't require any type of like special ventilation or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. So you're not pickling anybody with the non-alcohol?
No, it hasn't been proven to be effective.
Some people may wanna be, but.
That's the only way you can answer that.
Really. Tuesday's is so good.
Do we have to make a motion? To set a public hearing?
That would be good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for as soon as possible.
September fourteenth at seven P M.
Okay, perfect, so it showed back here? That would be good.
Do you wanna say what you normally say?
Yeah, I will, yeah. So I made a motion, is there a second?
Did you second?
Uh, I second, one of us said, I second.
Second. Okay, trustee Lanthir? Aye, trustee Spitzer? Acre, trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Matt Plummer?
All right.
So now, now I'm gonna give you the speech that we give to everybody.
Okay.
Which is that that's the soonest we can do a public law, we don't have any control over this, we would love to just, you know, do it as soon as we possibly can. We have to put notices in newspapers, that takes a few weeks, it's an arcane system, we have no choice in the matter.
Okay.
And we're sorry. And that's the soonest we can do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, September fourteenth at four P M?
Seven.
Seven P M, oh, sorry, okay.
If you call it four, you might be waiting.
Okay, I like that, am I all set?
Yes, you are.
Okay, next up, uh, Village Bakery, the cafe.
Oh, no.
Hi, how are you?
I'm welcome.
Very well, thank you.
Maybe in a minute. I'll come and bring this up again.
I'm good.
Okay.
So my name's Tucker Cooley, I'm here uh, representing Charlie Fitzsimmons who uh, put in the application for the special permit with the addition of the extra seats and the um, addition of a small dinner component to the Village Bakery as well, the beer and wine um, license with that.
Okay, any questions? You have a great track record, everybody loves the Village Bakery, it's such a gathering spot and I also think you're probably really meeting a need for the dinner crowd, you know.
Yeah, it would be very helpful. Yes, it would be helpful, it's been an interesting, you know, year and a half, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, could, could the audience please mute their phones? Cafe, thank you.
Thank you, um, and I also see that you're going to um, beautify the patio.
So I believe that's the plan for uh, twenty twenty-two, next year.
But that's, that's nice.
Yeah, it's been neglected and the, the garbage containment system is not ideal.
But that's great, that's a nice thing to do. Is there a motion? I'll give you a question, I'm sorry.
I just have one question, uh, I don't know if it's for the attorney, uh, but uh, so with, with going for a beer and a license for wine here, I noticed this is, it seems to be right next to the tavern of the district. Uh, but it's not included in it, is that a problem?
No, not provided that qualifies as a restaurant.
Distinction between restaurant and.
Tavern.
It's a good question, I'll thank you.
Restaurant. Okay. Any other questions before I ask for a motion?
Can I have a change in the special use permit, the title, so that's what we're saying?
Yes.
Now a restaurant, whoever before, let's take your guess.
Well, I think, I think we're doing a whole different thing, this is anything, sure.
It's just gonna be semantics.
Yeah.
Straight, okay.
Probably clean under the old code, this is, no way they can use it as a restaurant. You know, I don't want to get that close, but, they are a restaurant, they have a kitchen.
Oh, absolutely. Right, yeah, and they prepare food to order, yeah.
So it comes in as a mob kitchen, a special permit.
Everybody pull on that then, okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing, the request for a special use permit for the Village Bakery on September, what was the date we would determine?
Fourteenth.
September fourteenth at seven P M.
We'll be hopping.
I'll second that motion.
Trustee Lanthir? Aye, trustee Spitzer? Aye, trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Matt Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we'll see you on September fourteenth at seven?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you have a great.
Tucker's same story, that's the question.
Yeah.
The other, the other question for you is, is, is there anything else we can do to help your businesses involved?
Uh, unless you have employees for us.
Everybody.
Yeah, we're struggling right now, where we're looking at probably closing on some days, because we don't have enough staff.
You know, Delmonte did that.
Yeah, we just closed one of our restaurants, Webster, Jojo. Yeah, well, not permanently, but uh, at least until mid-September.
Well, all the best.
Thank you.
Okay, alrighty. Okay, next up, please, Thirsties?
Hello.
Hello. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Nice, so wanna just give us a little background here?
Yeah, uh, my name's Blake Giannini, uh, my brother and I are business partners, we live in the city of Rochester, next to my mother. Uh, we're also neighbors too, so it's like counts three in a row there. Um, I'm here to discuss Eight State Street, which is um, currently Thirsties. Um, and we are in contract to buy it and part of the process of buying it is getting a special permit um, through speaking with Steve. He, I guess, figured out that this process was required. And, that brings me here. As far as the ongoing business, we would like it to stay open and then the next day we own it and nothing changes. Um, deliveries are gonna be the same time, the dumpsters the same times, the same staff numbers, same number of bar stools, everything is gonna stay the same.
Are there any questions for Mr. Giannini?
Anything about putting a sign up?
Absolutely, inside.
What was the story about, there is a story behind the sign, right?
It's the sign.
It depends who you ask.
That's right. Okay, yeah. No questions, is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to send this to public hearing on September.
Fourteenth, fourteenth, seven P M.
Um, I, okay, but we may wanna amend that because you, you technically don't own it yet?
Correct.
Okay, so it would be pending? How, how, what do you?
You could, send this to public hearing and make any permit conditional on them owning.
Ownership, you know, just so we're. At that being, okay, great, okay, so just so we're. Okay, so there was a second? A vote please?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, thank you. As I went out. Okay, trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Trustee Spitzer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Matt Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah, I just have one question, is what is the public hearing like, is it uh, same space? And uh, do I present or anything, or is it just a, a time where I sit and listen to comments?
Well, you really ask questions, you know, certainly, and obviously it's a public hearing, so the public would, you know, step up and speak and.
Fairly similar.
Get your contract or your purchase done probably in the mall.
Uh, it's, yeah, it won't be done by them, uh, just, I think a local license is gonna take along the longest part, uh, anticipating November and stuff. No, I do that for making the purchase.
I mean, if you all have these rights, you know.
Yeah, I, I won by September fourteenth.
Okay, thank you very much. Say hi to him.
Well done.
Okay.
Good luck.
Okay, so uh, why don't we go right back up to the non-municipal applications and take a look at those? Pittsburgh Double Linn High School Homecoming Parade.
Okay, I think, I think I'll move to high schools for me tonight.
Yeah, I think it is.
Let me just, I'm starting to over the place, the book, the book we call Minutes is getting in my way tonight. Okay, this is the Homecoming Parade, this is a yearly event, they're looking to hold it October ninth. Um, nothing really changing, but I do understand and uh, remind you, my homecoming parade seems concerned with confetti.
Yeah, um, this is something, and actually I've, I've spoken with a ton about this and um, and I also speak with Mike Caro, uh, when we had the um, the seniors, the graduation parade, which is great, there was, um, there were uh, like mylar and just streamers and plastic confetti everywhere. And they tried their best to sweep it up, but we still didn't have streamers up in the trees, so my recommendation would be that um, they have biodegradable, you know, confetti or streamers, which is sort of now actually best practices for most of, you know, public events like this, here you can use dry fall pedals, some people.
Make that as a condition.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, I think that'd be a good thing to do and I think it would be best practices. Now, that's, that's all, that's all I have, so.
And that's more than forty-five days away, right?
Yeah.
You really don't have to count today, no, it's over forty-five.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the non-municipal use permit for the Pittsburgh Homecoming Parade on October ninth.
I'll second the motion.
With, with the condition?
With the condition?
With the condition of the biodegradable uh, confetti.
Okay, trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Trustee Spitzer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Matt Plummer?
All right.
Motion passes. Okay, next one we have is the annual duck draw. Coming, yes, it's, yeah. They try to get through the gates.
You know, I was looking for it too, I thought I went past it.
I assume it's the same as what I was seeing.
It is, and hold on. I just didn't show, apparently didn't quit in. Okay, they're looking to hold it September eighteenth, I will need a forty-five day waiver between four and six, it's in a duck, jury and conductance with the town itself. Festival leading up to the event, we have our volunteers selling tickets at various locations throughout the village week of the event. We put a sign on Main Street in front of the Port of Pittsburgh Park. They provided insurance and everything is already there. And they were in today and they can authorize and sign on the gambling portion of this.
Oh, right.
It was approved by voters, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed this.
No problem, any questions for Dorothea about this, or is there a motion please?
Did my only question is, is the application any different than in years prior?
No, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion please?
I'll make a motion to approve uh, and waive the forty-five day wait period. I'll second.
Well, please.
Trustee Lanthir?
Aye.
Trustee Spitzer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Matt Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, go ducks.
Okay.
Was that, but, so no, what, what, no duck, what, you left that?
That's right, that's right. All ducks in, okay, uh, next up, the Turn the Town Teal.
Correct, this is a returning application as well, this is done every year to create awareness for ovarian cancer. And that's usually, they put them up the month of September. So they go up September first and come down by September thirtieth. And we, I think in the past we asked them to keep to just the trees. I'm sorry, it was just to keep to the trees with the rhythms.
This is the trees, I think they did some of the light posts as well. There was like just the light posts.
Is this the one we had to be P W supervised?
Yes, um.
Yes.
So this is the thing that I wanted to talk about, last year they did them, or the one before COVID. They did, they tied things on themselves and some of them were literally right against oncoming traffic. And it looked super dangerous, and in years past, we've done it or we've supervised it.
Oh, we never have?
Actually, last year was the first, uh, last time this was done, um, was the first time we've ever supervised.
Okay.
It's usually done and then maybe they knocked it out pretty quick, um, but they are, they're like twenty people.
Do we wanna make sure that they have the proper guidelines?
Or do it ourselves?
Like, that's a good point.
Hold on, let me finish, so, so the, we, last year we, we kinda put a pin in this and said, next time we do this, we want better supervision because it looks super dangerous. When, when you just saw them on their way, so what are the ideas of what we can do to make this safer for the people, how do you think so?
Honestly, if they stay on the side of the block, there really shouldn't be any issues if they're, you know, standing out on the street, I mean, they're trying to take responsibility on themselves. We don't have the P P E to hand up or that kind of stuff, or I, depending on the day, I might be able to give up a bunch of people to go and assist with and kind of.
Wouldn't it make sense to print up some guidelines for them about, about the safety of how to do this? Okay, so you know, maybe it's just something is.
Yeah, maybe recommendation that they, you know, like, you know, with traffic, there's good and bad times, maybe lighter traffic time like Saturday mornings or Sunday mornings.
Would they, are they looking to?
September first through the thirtieth, but I'm sure a day or two to accommodate, you know, later, I know.
That's not a bad idea, stick it to a weekend.
Yeah.
I think that's actually one of the other, especially if there'd be so many people on the.
So that would be our recommendation with the guidelines for safety?
Yeah, the first Saturday, September the fourth, so it's only two days off the.
Do we want to ask for insurance for them?
They provide insurance.
Wasn't in the packet.
No, they give it to us as soon as we provide because of the cost of getting it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. And do we have to waive the, we do have to waive? And contingent on us to live, well, us, them following the guidelines that we set. And that it's scheduled for an early morning on a weekend.
We didn't provide any guidelines, so, so are we, I thought we were doing, having them do it on the weekend in lieu of providing guidelines, saying it's safer if it's traffic, we slower to do it on a, you just stick to the sidewalk.
Well, we can just.
That should suffice it, it's, they've been doing it for years.
Yeah, they should know, yeah, but just, just so we're clear that the safer time to do it, I think is really important.
I just wanted to set back the forty, the motion, so we don't have guidelines other than stick to the sidewalk and do it on a.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, thinking that it's usually the safer time.
I know that's when our crew likes to watch.
Probably before church time.
Yeah. Okay, do we, nobody seconded it because I interrupted them. So I can second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So there's a second permit.
Okay, trustee Lanthir.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Katie.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, Embrace Your Sisters.
Yes, Embrace Your Sisters, this is the positively pink and Pittsburgh breast cancer walk. And I believe. They weren't here last year.
It was canceled last year.
Yeah, because of COVID.
Right, this is the one they walk on the sidewalks. Everything, and I think pass the guidelines to the board, some certain guidelines, the request from the board is that they be. Curious of the church. The noise.
So many comfortable with the same guidelines that we talked about when they initially came? As we talked about one, I think they did it on a Sunday and asked them to be conscious about people.
It's September twenty sixth, and I can't naturally say if this is Sunday or Monday.
I would make a motion that we accept the application for non municipal use permit for Embrace Your Sisters under the same conditions as we approved previously. Is there a second?
One second. Okay, trustee Lanthir.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Katie.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh, and we waived that forty five as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, this one came in today, it was included in your updated packet, it was the letter from the town of Pittsburgh requesting a non municipal use permit for the summer, end of summer festival with food truck and music fest. And that is to the twelve, September eighteenth, from noon to nine P M on South Street. The South Main Street closed from Monroe Avenue to State Street to Locust from five M to twelve P M on September eighteenth, it's the Wild Horse Stage delivery on Friday A M, third down following the events. I think this is again a yearly event and was canceled last year due to COVID.
There's, there's no.
No.
This is separate than how.
Yeah.
I, they, I'm not so sure they're gonna do it. Yeah, but nothing has been burned up on that at all. Yeah.
I'm surprised this wasn't under their blanket, you know.
Well, they initially, if we received their yearly request, this wasn't included, and that request was just a notification to the board, they were holding the events. And they weren't requesting a non municipal because it was all in town. This actually ends up on village property, so they need a non municipal, or in this case, a municipal, yeah, because they're.
But it's, it's the same, similar. Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to.
And a forty five day waiver.
Oh, the forty five day, that's right.
I'll make a motion to approve the non municipal, municipal, non municipal. For the talent goods for food truck, music fest, and waive the forty five day. Requirement.
Is there a second? Matthew second.
Vote. Trustee Lanthir.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Katie.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so moving on. Where are we here?
Do you want to go back to the trustee report?
Oh, to the treasurer's, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A trustee.
Looks like we are doing.
I'm skipping everything. I'm just trying to see if Brooklyn is on and I'm not seeing Brooklyn, if you're on, please raise your hand, you're not showing up. I don't.
So we have your report?
Well, I can.
Or do you want to?
I can ring it, and Mary is here maybe.
Oh, okay, okay, if we can just.
Mary, if you're mute yourself, you can join the conversation if you want.
Can you hear me now? Awesome, I do have. The vouchers, I am only missing the last one that he added. So Dorothea, you may have to speak to that, I just took a.
I can do the treasurer's report and you can jump in for the rest, how about that? We'll double team it.
Okay, so let me just see here, what does he have? Voucher one oh four, Buncho's, our annual flowers. Let's see, these I'm just calling out for highlights, the other stuff, we have Hudson Ross in here for four eighty eight. Integrated five fifty four Sonic wall. John Bailey, one sixteen. For twenty eight hundred and four eighty, for the refinishing of the door and the new kick plates. M N T, one nineteen for the installment payment on the sweeper. And we have three invoices here, one twenty one for Osborne Reed. The others look like they're all normal kind of things. Some insurance payments at one twenty nine, Zaglin Group, one thirty. For the L W R P and the P Z B A regular meeting. All the regular things here. And the rest is all normal billing. The only other thing that I don't have on mine, and you should have on yours, Dorothea, is the addition for the C N B card. The first card should be the last, one thirty eight.
We have a grand total of fifty one thousand ninety four dollars and eighty two cents for this bill paid from the updates today. And we apologize for the updates, but when we're at the monthly meetings, we're trying to give as much as we can before the month is, you know, closed.
Okay, so I just need a motion to accept these vouchers. And for payment.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the vouchers for payment.
A second please?
I'll second.
Vote.
Trustee Lanthir.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Katie.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, okay, moving on, I've included the A U D in this meeting packet, that is our annual update document, which. Depicts the results of the fiscal year, and that was. Done timely, actually, we got it in a little bit early, we had it locked into the state on July twenty eighth, the deadline date is August first. So instead of going through the document that you're kind of unfamiliar with, I will go through. The year end recap with this forms that you have been seeing all along. So first of all, the bottom line to the revenues versus the expenses as of May thirty first. We had a surplus of two hundred seventy three thousand nine hundred sixty four dollars, which is like, I have to go back, there's gotta be something wrong. But it was, it was correct, we did come out in a lot of categories that. We didn't anticipate, and on the sewer fund, same difference, revenues versus expenses, we had a difference of seventy two thousand nine oh nine, seventy three surplus, so. That was both awesome on both parts, now how did we get there? As far as the two seventy three was concerned.
Mary, are you looking at?
I am looking at an Excel sheet now that says year end recap. It's much easier for me to explain it to you through this. Avenue rather than going through page by page of the annual update document, which is basically the same thing as what you're seeing, only in a different format. Are you, are you with me? An Excel sheet, probably the very last item in the treasurer's section. Says year end. Recap, it should be following the annual update document. If you're following it on screen. Starts with revenues and expenses. Dorothea, can you show them what it looks like?
It starts with this page, you'll find that.
What's the header on?
It says year end recap, village of Pittsburgh, August tenth. And then it goes back to what you. There should be bookmarks in the.
Hold on, I'm just trying to.
Just trying to make it easy for you guys.
That's okay, we're just a little slow, hold on.
That's okay, let me know when you're ready to go.
Did the board like we make an.
I was just thinking that, why don't we just get some copies?
So let's take.
How many copies to?
Go make some copies.
The other question is, would opening that door make it less hot in here?
Uh, probably.
A C would be.
Versus, I don't know.
How are you? Never mind.
Okay, and turn down the air so we should be getting some. You only asked for.
I don't know.
I searched for that. Yeah, well, it's, the problem is that's.
So Mary, she's making copies for us.
Yeah, none of, why are we?
We're not, we're not. And I, I can't get it on, okay.
All right, while, while she's making copies for you, I don't know if any of you can see the. Forms that you're familiar with that I normally give you, which is the, you know, detail of revenue and detail of expenses. That's following all of that in there, but I can go through it briefly with you, you want me to wait until I get, probably the best I get, I wait. It'd only be a minute. But ironically, we did very, very well. In many ways, the pandemic has not been very kind to a lot of municipalities. We did budget strategically and we did well with the, with the difference, so I'm very pleased with where we ended up. And. Basically, we, I'll recap another little tidbit here, we, our fund balance is always a place of concern, and we had like, just barely enough fund balance to kind of. Cover any kind of catastrophe that might happen throughout the year, we started out the beginning of our fiscal year with a hundred eighty one thousand four seventy nine. We ended the fiscal year with a fund balance of four hundred fifty five thousand one nineteen. So that was a total difference added to our fund balance of two hundred seventy three thousand six forty, which really puts us in a comfortable place, how it has helped us recover. From where we had not been able to for many years, so it was really a blessing in disguise for us, so it did work out very well. But I will, as soon as you get those sheets, I'll tell you how we got there. And a lot of it was just keeping the reins on everything, and some of it was just surprise things that kind of popped out, but it all ended up. Working out really to our benefit, we're in a stable place. At this point, with the general fund, which was, you know, a matter of huge concern. Throughout this last fiscal year, knowing the conditions that we were living under with the pandemic.
For you, the, the money that came in from the federal government, was that last fiscal year or this fiscal year?
It came in this fiscal year, twenty one twenty two fiscal year. I have to go, I don't know how many of you had joined in on the conference for the American Rescue Plan monies, I personally. Did not join in on that conference, I had family in all week, so I was not able to listen in on it, so I do have to go back. And try to recap just what all the criteria is, and we do have sixty eight thousand in change that came into us, we have it sitting in our bank account as I speak. And we will get another allotment of same next year as well, and then that, that clears it up, but we have to be very. Careful that we meet exactly the criteria that they're spelling out, because we do have to file reports regarding the money that we are spending. I understand we can go back and recapture some of our expenses to, as far back as March twenty twenty, twenty twenty, I think, but I have to verify after I have a chance to. Look at the webinar presented by N I C O M. So, all right, are, are we all on the year end recap?
Mary, I have one question of something you just said, so you said that an equal amount will come in next year, is that next calendar year or next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year. Yeah, so next June twenty twenty two, we should get another sixty eight thousand.
Thank you.
I'm hoping, yeah, we all, everybody has the sheets, thank you, Dorothea, for printing this out, so we're ready to go on the year end recap.
All right, so how we got there on the revenues, which was a little bit of the surprising thing. And you do have backup information in your packets that shows you what the detail of that revenue was, but I won't go into it since you had a long meeting here. More monies came in than we had anticipated in all of these revenue categories, which was interest on taxes, we had eleven eighty six more, our Monroe County sales tax. Came in at ninety seven thousand four hundred, four hundred eighty two thousand, four hundred eighty two dollars more than anticipated. Normally, if it were in that particular category, if it was a normal budget year, that money would have been right on the money. But because we were told to drop back our sales tax by thirty percent, we adjusted that money so that we wouldn't be. Suffering it with, in the end, you know, with the possible deficit, so that's what we did, and as it turned out, we came in at our normal monies, so that was. Awesome, it was just awesome. Permits other, which is like the dumpster permits, special permits, and that sort of thing, we had fourteen fifty more than what we had initially budgeted. Donor monies, which was monies that we received for benches. We had two benches that we had purchased throughout the year, and that's the twenty seven sixty seven on there. Mortgage tax was another category that we had cut back, thinking that during the pandemic, people would not move. We were very surprised because they moved more than ever, and. We had budgeted eighteen five, but came in at forty six six, so we had a profit of twenty eight thousand one eighty two seventy one more than what we had anticipated in our budget. So what we collected in revenues more was a hundred thirty thousand four oh three, the one thing we did not have realized in our budget, and that is because of different mechanics, and was. In category A two six six five, which was the sale of equipment, we had planned on taking a piece of equipment to auction. And anticipated getting about sixteen five for it, what ended up happening was we took the. Equipment and used it as an offset against the. Equipment we, I think it was a T four fifty that we purchased, and so that reduced our cost in that category instead, and so this one was not realized. So moving on to the, any questions?
When it comes to the expenses, maybe just talk about the ones greater than ten K, because there's a lot of these here.
Right, well, so it's just a general, general accumulation of the, they, the total that I picked up, and this was just general, there were other categories in here that had added to. Differences as well, but I was just picking up things that were a little bit higher, so there was differences, if you're going just by the ones over ten K, the clerk services sixteen. The clerk services 166 because we didn't have anyone working in the category at the time. Zoglin appeal was over, was 18,000 less than what we had planned on. I think we, she had budgeted 18750. We only spent 571 against that category. So that money was not, not realized. LWRP, same difference. We had 30,000. We spent 15,000, so we saved the 14,991. Equipment, 26,237. There was an accounts receivable against.
Before you move on, the old stuff, I do want to note for a minute that the estimate on Hudson Russ for that year was 25. We made a decision to double it as a board and that was a, that turned out to be a very good decision. It ended up at, it ended up at 43 if we stayed with the 25 budget. And there was a lot of debate around that and I'm really glad. We even talked 75 and we talked ourselves back to 50 and that ended up being a good decision.
And, and that figure, Dan, just to be clear, we had, she came in, they came in at 25 and then we added another 25,000 against our long-term debt with them. So we brought our debt down now, which is now 25,000. So that helped us to clear some of those money above and beyond what was planned on. 26,000, we ended up having purchased a new piece of equipment. So that money was sitting on, on an accounts receivable. Instead, it's going through chips and it's a new little Kubota, I think. Our TV. All right, workers' comp, we got a little bit of a kickback. So it was this, we didn't realize the 162429 just reduced our figure. So between the differences of 130 on revenues and the savings and expenses of about another 144,000, that brought us up to approximately the 275,000. So when you clear that and after all the year-end adjustments, the difference added to fund balance is the 273,640. So that is where we are right now at the end of the fiscal, at the beginning of the new fiscal year. We are starting out with a fund balance of 455,119. That is an awesome place to be. And if we don't rock the boat on that, it's a great place to end the new year or this fiscal year, if we can go forward with that.
Only one that worries from a maintenance standpoint is the tree maintenance was, we came in 7200 less. That's a variable thing. It's not predictable year over year, but obviously that's something we want to keep up with if we can.
We like, yes, we like to budget a little bit higher. He has some projects that he always has on, on tap to do. We just didn't pursue all the projects at that point, so we saved out 7200.
Yeah, thank you. Zach's here and he was just gonna chime in a little bit on that.
Okay, I don't see Zach, so go ahead.
Give you the heads up, yeah.
Last year was just a bit of anomaly, just doing, yeah. Really get as much done as we would like. But our tree work this year is probably twice as much as most last year. So it'll be close to.
Yeah, and you, you sent me part of a tree schedule, things that were coming up. And so what, what, I'll forward that to the boards. Everybody sees kind of, you know, where we're going with it. I think that's a great idea to do that, okay?
Thanks.
All right, so that, that basically covers the general fund, which I am honestly very well, very pleased with and couldn't have asked for better. The sewer fund, there generally isn't a whole lot of shifting around to do in there. We did revenues over expenses. We did come up with 72,90973. That adds to our unreserved fund balance of 746,933, which is basically two, it's, it's a good place, but it's too high for us to be carrying in an unreserved account. We need to move monies from there into a reserved place. And that said, also in this fiscal year, we have appropriated fund balance for 116648 that would come off against the 746, which would leave us with a balance of $630,000. And 116648 by budget was for the CIPP work that was being done in the sewer fund. So that said, we were really in pretty good shape. The last thing that I would like to convey is off the capital improvements fund, we, I think we budgeted a $9,000 figure, like 9050 or something. And the year-end figure for that fund balance is 8631. So 8631 will be applied against our bond payment for this upcoming year, which will take place like in May next year. So that will then close out that capital improvements fund from 2015, which was the bond that we had taken out to take care of Grove Street and some other items that we had there. Other than that, this is all listed out in the AUD, but I know it's a complicated kind of document to look at. If anyone wants to sit with me, I will be happy to explain it. Otherwise, there, I pretty much gave you a little world tour on it. And we're in great shape. So I'm very pleased with the outcome of things for the 2021 fiscal year. Any questions?
My only question is the independently audited, we do that at some point, don't we?
We haven't had a real independent audit, so to speak. They're very expensive, like 30,000 or more. What, this document that I prepare is with the help of the auditor from our accounting firm. So I bring him out as much of the information, then they take it up the next level. They actually prepare this document, but I do all the preparatory work for it. So if there's any questions or adjustments, that is something that they normally take care of. So they go through all my figures to make sure that what I'm reporting is correct, basically. But to have an outside firm come in and, and take care of an audit for us, we have not had that done. Like I said, it's a very, very expensive proposal to take care of. Not saying that it shouldn't be done, but in years past, our funds were really very tight and we weren't really at that, having that opportunity to, to go out and get that done. And it does take up a lot of staff time and personnel time to work with the auditors to get all this information together for them. And we did have an actual revisit from the auditors last year this time. And we came out okay with that. I mean, we still, we're, we're at a place where we're working on some items and they seem to be okay with all of that. So that's the bottom line to that. Any, any further questions?
I just had one question, Mary. So it seems like based on a quick calculation, this puts us at about 28 to 29% of the appropriations, which is definitely good. I mean, that's actually a little bit above our, our range of 10 to 15% or the 16, 6, 7% that the, the government finance officers association recommends. What's the, what are the next steps for transferring some of the funds over that amount to reserve funds?
It would be really kind of careful planning because it all depends on how well we do this year. That is our only savings pocket, so to speak. So if we have some catastrophe that happens that we did not budget for, that's where the money would be coming out from. So it's good to have a little bit of a cushion in there above and beyond what we absolutely need to survive as a business as far as paying our payroll and vendors for a time period. But if it's a continued, if it's a continued practice, like say a year after year after year, we're still coming up with 28, 30%, at that point, we should take a look and, and pull some money and put it into a reserve. You know, or have a dedicated place for it. And it's not to say we shouldn't do that this year yet. We may have other opportunities to, to look at things, but it needs, it really needs careful planning because they, it's, we just got restored. So we don't want to fall down the hill again. I mean, if anything kind of, you know, blows up, it could suck us, suck us dry again. You know, if we have litigation or that sort of thing, it really kind of takes a toll on us. And this gives us also an opportunity to increase our budget to do things, you know, like road projects or whatever too, so we have that little bit of fallback on there.
Yeah.
But careful planning is where I was going with all that.
Mary, I was just gonna think, I was thinking too, just that even at some point, you know, given, given the nature of the balance and possibly transferring, we could have it in a workshop again and really sort through things, you know, and adjust that a little bit.
Yeah, I would suggest really with the sewer count, that's one.
Yeah.
Agree with me, the controllers have pushed us to get some of those funds into a dedicated reserve.
Right, I definitely agree sewer count for sure. It doesn't hurt to review the budget sooner than later. Brooklyn and I will, I will be teaching him how to post and get our books up to date. So maybe after we get our first couple of months up on the, on the books, we can take a look at it as a board and see where we are and how we look and, you know, what decisions we can make on things that are there. But there are some cleanup things that we do need to take care of that I would like to see happen before I go.
Zach had a quick comment, I believe. Did you have?
It's just, Dr. L, when you asked me the other day, is the easiest fix is the siphon reserve.
Exactly.
I mean, I think the controller's been all over us.
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely. That is one, one real good place because we need to have something for disaster relief and we don't have that there.
Correct.
So that starts with Scott Harder.
Right.
Who has to give us a current number for what we need if we have a siphon or siphons failure.
Right, and then the, the one number that he gave us from a few years ago, that, if the siphon goes, it would, it would be about a million dollars or more just to get that fixed. So even if we move 300 or 350,000 out of that unreserved balance, it still doesn't come close to a disaster relief, but it's a step in the right direction as far as the comptroller is concerned. It's, it's, all the money is still sitting in the same place, it's just moved into a different line. And that's, it's just a simple fix to make them happy. But my caution is that once it's moved there, it is a reserved amount and we have to be careful, you know, it is for a designated purpose and you can't just pull it out when you want, so.
Or essentially it's open for until the disaster.
Right, that's correct.
Speaking with the mayor, I think it's appropriate, we request from Scott Harder some new numbers so we can get this reserve started. Because really getting that done this year would be a very good thing because I really would hate for the comptrollers to come back again to check on us when we haven't done.
It's still there.
Right, we need to have that worked on, so.
Excuse me, one second, Mary. Jeff, Jeff's gonna come.
I thought the number to do one siphon was less than that, Mary.
We need to get with.
I, I think if you look back, well, I don't know if you have it now or not, but I think it was a million bucks. When he, he provided us drawings and a whole, a whole workup and I believe he, he said it was going to be at least a million.
Yeah, I heard it written out between a million and 2 million per siphon, so.
So the siphon fails, what do we do? I mean, how?
Well, if the siphon fails, we take out the money we have in the reserve. And then we, you know, depending on what other kind of monies we have that we can apply, other than that, we would have to probably go to bond on that particular item.
Yeah, so really that's going to be a very.
Okay, hang on, who's talking here?
I'm, I'm just saying it's a very simple reserve for the board to do right away to get those funds actually where it needs to be. That way it's, it'll be, you know.
It's cleaned up, it's cleaned up.
I was, I was under the impression mistakenly of it, I made that we had enough money available to do a siphon if, if things went.
Yeah, no.
It's mid-sour, you know, so I'm not gonna be able to do something. It takes to do a repair and could have to do pump-ups, which means, you know, a truck needs to stand by, someone pumping that truck full of sulfur. Generators, everything else. Worst case scenario, a million and a half.
So probably the action item then is let's get right back to Scott Harder. Let's confirm the, the numbers that he came up with and see if there's anything that's changed with that. You and I spoke, we also, we were going to talk, speak with other villages about siphon, you know, what, what are they, what are they doing? You know, we haven't really had any other siphon failures, but then again.
This is over.
Yeah.
Right.
So we need to get on it.
Part of Scott's proportion to deal with the immediacy of a siphon failure and what does, what do we do when that happens? What's the contingency plan?
Get the plan in.
Yeah, we, we need to have the plan.
So is the board at agreement that we pursue this with Scott Harder to make sure we're going to be heading in the right direction? If, if we do have some type of a catastrophic failure? Okay, okay, and we'll, we'll get together, we'll, we'll report back to the board. We'll, you know, send out emails just telling where we're going with it.
Well, we can move the funds, it's, we can do that.
Yeah, we can move the funds at any time, but I just want the funds, the funds that are going to be moved based on a solid decision because once they're in place, we don't want to keep monkeying with them.
So we need the documentation really to be the, you know, the backdrop for our transfer of response to this type of reserve. And again, it's the action item. Zach's gonna follow up with Scott, we'll work together, we'll keep the board, you know, apprised of what's going on.
We'll all sleep better at night knowing what the plan is if there's a catastrophe.
So the last thing I wanted to say on all this, it seems like we're done with that. Yeah, I just want to mark this moment and underline how glad I am that we didn't raise taxes this fiscal year, that we voted as a board to, to not raise taxes, given this scenario. And we're not always going to get that right. And we certainly couldn't see this much of a windfall coming, but it is important to mark the moment when we did get it right. And so, thank you.
Well, it did, yeah, it did work to our benefit this year, this time. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to both boards that helped through, helped us to get to this place. So thank you again.
Mary, thanks so much for your hard work on this. I know this was really quite the effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, I'm aligned. I spoke to the board at the workshop. We talked about needing to extend our time to help cover the office while we're at training. I absolutely request, I'm going to be out of the office almost three weeks in October. I'm trying to take a vacation. It's a crazy idea. So if we could extend Mary's employment till November 1st, then give her additional time in Brooklyn, get her done, finalize her out.
I think that's a good idea, you know, keep things.
Then give up extra coverage while I'm gone. It's always good, the, Brooklyn and Marina are doing fabulous. And if you're online, I appreciate everything they do. But having a senior person in, still bringing them up to speed is always an invaluable.
And still with the institutional knowledge as well, yeah, I think that's important.
Mary, I'm saying being old is good. I am, so if I can have approval from the board for that.
Form a motion?
Yes, please.
Formal motion, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, okay, a second please.
A second.
So trustee Lintner?
Aye.
Trustee Sessler?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lincoln?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Oh.
Thank you.
Mary, we're not letting you go yet.
Guess not.
Okay, so, Ellen Clark, report.
Okay, I'm gonna be quick. I have the guidelines for public comment. We sort of presented last time, you have the written updated copy. A couple of things we added, and I know the board's going to go back and forth on some things. Some things I would request you keep. Written comments being submitted by noon of the day of the meeting. This all facilitates me getting things to you right away. I really hate for something to come in, I'm caught up getting packet ready and doing something and I miss an email. So at least I feel better if I put the new, new deadline on there. Obviously, if it comes in after that and I see it, I'll get it to you. I'll make every effort, but I think it's behoove in us to have a deadline for people.
Can I, before we launch into this, two sort of processes, this could be a very long conversation. There's a lot we need to do. Two thoughts on it. One is, would it make sense to put this in a Google Doc where we could all make comments on it and do it in a real-time manner, open, transparent? Barring that, or maybe in addition to that, should we maybe do this as a workshop? Uh, barring that, or maybe in addition to that, um, should we maybe do this as a workshop? Because I, I anticipate this taking a very long time to work through. What do you guys think about that?
Um, yes, I'm trying, someone's speaking, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Were you speaking and I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Uh, Dan wanted to put this into a workshop.
Yeah.
Or, or a Google Doc.
Or a goo, or a Google Doc for us to, you know, work on.
I agree, because I think that there's uh, this is an even larger picture here, um, regarding, regarding our policy. Totally, totally, uh, probably, then our meetings and um that we should probably address also, not just the public comment portion. Um, and if we could have available to us, if anybody can get this done, is the town recently revised their public comment, and I think we could also benefit from reading what they have done. I do clearly think that, um, it, we need a lot more conversation around it to come up with a, be in a comfortable place where some of us, like myself, uh, who, uh, would like to encourage um, more, as much as I appreciate the faculty and conversation, which we did continue for a while, um, in the last four years, just one sort of conversation, but to be able to comment on what is before the board for deliberation at any given time, I'm of this, I'm of this school thought that more information is, is better. I prefer hearing just as much as they're willing to share, and, because I feel that's why I'm here. So, if it goes long, it goes long, but I would rather err on the side of hearing from my residents than of just restricting them, and um, so, I think this is a good starting point, but there are definitely things here that were brought up this evening that I would like to see us incorporate as we, as we go forward.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're for like a workshop with a Google, Google Doc, we had a couple of different proposals, any other comments from people? I mean, I personally think talking conversation is no substitution, I think it's an addition.
Yes.
And that's what I was trying to convey earlier to the board and also to anybody who's still even online, listening. Um, it's, it's, it's not the one thing, I think it's the many, I think it's many creating many opportunities for public engagement, um, and also with the understanding that when we do have our meetings such as this, that we're, we're also transacting business on behalf of our our village as well as elected officials, so I think, again, it is that balance and how do we get those layers of interaction with, with the public, and again, I would encourage the trustees to possibly set up even some office hours, just even a couple hours a week, I think that's really a wonderful thing to do, to make yourself available to, to residents that way.
Yes, I'm sorry, Justin, then I just, you overthink it, I'm sorry, for workshops, this is when we had a workshop, was it two weeks ago, or last week?
It was last week.
Last week, I know, it feels like, you know.
And there was, there was some restriction to the comments that we were accepting as a workshop, and I went, came into the workshop and I had asked Jeff prior to the meeting, the purpose of the workshop, because I had missed the meeting before, prior meeting, I wanted to clarify that the purpose of the workshop was to bring, uh, to the public an opportunity to speak uh, regarding what we were discussing, and so what they, what I heard from that meeting, that workshop meeting, was a, a, a resident was able to, to um state their position or ask a question, but then they were not allowed to speak again for the rest of the workshop. And I guess my vision was that there would be back and forth dialogue as a workshop, all of us working together with the, the residents to get exactly feel for what they, what they were trying to convey, and as things develop, and then we would maybe bounce an idea and then they would come with and obviously in that as the workshop, not to state your, your opinion in the very beginning and not get another opportunity to speak for the rest of the workshop. So maybe that workshop is putting me off a bit, because I feel that um I, I don't, maybe we should call a public, public hearing on it, because anything that would allow more opportunities for a resident to speak, where someone might speak and that gives them an idea, I think would I would just like to see a lot of more.
So more of a charrette?
Yeah, more like an interior.
The format I think is interesting, you know, because Renee, you and I were speaking about that, like for example, the budget workshops are very much board, you know.
Board work and nobody cares.
And people would maybe, if anybody shut up, they would watch you, you know, interact, so. So the term workshop or charrette, maybe that needs to be sorted out as well.
I'd like a clarification.
Input, you know, so, I don't think one necessarily negates the other, I think, again, it's, it's multiple. Yeah, Justin.
Yeah, just a couple of points, I um, agree with both trustee Keating and trustee Lanthir, I, I think that um a workshop would be great for this, I agree, there's probably a lot there to discuss. Um, and, and I also agree with trustee Lanthir in, in that, um, in general, I'd like to be more open to public comments uh, as, as we craft these, these policies, I think that's the, the side of the note, trend error. Um, it seems like there are two separate issues here that we're talking about, when we're talking about public comment. First of all, as I, I learned today in twenty sixteen, there is the uh, rules that we're operating under now that were adopted. Um, and we're also talking about new rules that we're going towards, and, and those were in the packets that we're discussing, and there's some slight differences, um, especially based on some feedback we've received from our attorney and our village clerk. So, part of what this board has received is a memo from uh, both of those village staff, which I appreciate very much. Um, I, I wanted to make sure that since these are influenced by that memo, uh, which I, I believe they are, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we should make that memo public as well, um, and, and if it's not, uh, if it's not already, I just wanna make sure that we're uh, that our understanding is that we're not asserting a trade client privilege, public comment or anything.
But actually, what you put posted is actually derivative of that memo.
Correct, I didn't post the.
The actual memo.
The memo, because it was included twenty recommendations, I.
The posting was derivative from the memo based on the, the outcome of that discussion.
I don't, I mean, I don't think there's any reason not.
No. Yeah, I don't think it was even thought of that we shouldn't, I just think what, what Dorothea put out was just, this is what, was the outcome was of that meeting, that's all.
So, it wouldn't be foillable.
It would not be foillable, okay.
It would not be foillable, it would not have been foillable unless you put it out.
Right.
Because it's an intra-agency communication, intra-agency.
Okay.
Um, and, yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't advice from the attorney, it was really a, a joint effort between the attorney and the clerk, so that's why I don't really have a problem, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem, it's only for me, whatever you, you're the doctor, you do what you want, well, I'm not hiding it from anything. Um, I wouldn't, I just wanna make a point though about attorney-client sessions.
Yes.
If those get made public, then there's no, we're done, there's no, no confidential relationship for that topic at that meeting left. So that's why, it's, it's totally unrelated topic, and I think, I don't think we could say often enough how important thinking about the attorney-client relationship. Now, very often, it's very helpful to have the opine publicly wheeling, because it explains to the public that it's not you, it's the law, which I think is a very helpful occasion for the public to understand. So, it's always a fine line when I give you advice as to whether it ought to be done publicly or privately. And that's really more your call than mine unless I have really good reason that I think it ought to be done privately.
Yeah.
So, so I, as a follow-up on that, and, and thank you very much, Jeff, for that explanation. I believe that that should be public, so the public can look at it to understand where these are, are being derived from, so uh, it may not be entirely necessary, but I, I will make a motion that any of us can, can share that memo.
Well, just have Dorothea post it, we'll just post it.
That's fine, I do.
I mean, I think that's the best way to do it, we can certainly post it, and um, I think, you know, I, I don't think it was anything more than Dorothea just distilling what came out of that and posting it, you know, in the packet, you know, if you want the whole memo, absolutely, I, I think that's.
It would be very helpful for people to see what a stupid.
See what other. Yeah.
No, I think it would be helpful
Yeah.
For the people to understand the legal side of this thing.
Yeah.
So, thank you, I, I don't know if it's entirely necessary, but I'll, I'll make a motion that, that this be posted on, on the website.
Um, well. It's okay, it makes, I'm, I'm not trying to, I have the word just posted, okay? Just throwing it up on the website somewhere doesn't really make sense, I don't have a section just documents related. What I would say is, the board is looking to hold a workshop, and my understanding, they wanna discuss this further. So if you're gonna discuss it further, packet would be created, this would be added to the packet, and I could add it there and it gives it.
And then it could be found in that area.
Correct, it puts this in the discussion items, so it's not just.
It's not hanging out there.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so, I, I will, just to, uh, not, not trying to be too passive here, but I'll make a motion, since I, I actually did request this in email too, and it didn't happen, uh, I will make a motion that this be added to the, the next packet, uh, for the workshop.
Um. Whenever we schedule the workshop is.
Correct.
Okay, I see where you're going, okay.
Um. Okay, you have a motion.
One second.
Okay, trustee, you went there?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lankin?
Aye.
No problem.
Aye.
Okay, um, since we're just talking workshop, I'm just having lunch today.
We combined the two, um, the marijuana legislation and the.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, oh yeah, we have a little mini agenda on that, for sure.
May, yeah, I just, one, one other point to, to follow up on that, so on, on the topic of the, uh, the new guidelines for public comment, um, I think that there, there are some good points that are, are raised in that document. I also did receive some feedback from the public that they felt that they were really overly restrictive. Um, and to, to be completely honest, that was also my impression, that uh, these new guidelines were, were very restrictive, and to me, it detracts some of the, the value of having village government, which is that it's supposed to be the government closest to the, the people it serves. Um, and so, I think that, well, there are some very good points brought up, and um, it's not necessarily even the starting point that I would want. Um, instead, I would suggest that, uh, if we go back to twenty sixteen, we adopted this from the NICOM handbook. Uh, the NICOM handbook actually has a slightly different formality today. Um, I would suggest that we actually look, uh, holistically at all of the NICOM suggested guidelines for meeting procedure. Um, and not just at this one particular section, in fact, in, in the handbook, they recommend looking at all of those.
Great, we can, why don't we discuss it in a workshop environment, because we, I think it'd be helpful to, you know.
I, I do have a, a copy of those, so, we've got a lot to.
So maybe Dorothea could distribute those to the board?
Yeah, the, the other thing, we're not gonna get into details, we're not gonna get into detail, this doesn't cover Zoom at all, we're not gonna wanna cover Zoom, so.
Technology, all of that, yeah.
Going back to where we started, are, um, are you guys comfortable, so, do you want me to put this in a Google Doc and put it out there and we'll all start collaborating on it? Or are we only going to collaborate on it once we come to a workshop? What, because I, I think it's pretty helpful to know where people.
Yeah, why don't we go between all of us and then bring it to the workshop?
Yeah, for the code update.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would also suggest that, that we, uh, post as a separate Google Doc, and I can share this with a group afterwards, the, the NICOM suggestions for all of the meeting procedures, which they recommend that we adopt, and this is a part of those, the other ones include, um, you know, rules of, of, uh, procedure at the meetings, what goes on the agenda, and, and NICOM does suggest that we look at this holistically.
Well, let's, okay, okay, well, let's figure out, I mean, we're, we're pulling in a whole bunch of stuff. So, I know we wanna really address public comments, I know we do wanna speak about the marijuana law and like our next steps with our timeline on that. Um, there is no doubt in my mind, there will be other things probably added onto this workshop, so I'm thinking how many pieces are we biting off at this point? Do we have a date even for the workshop at this point?
That's what I'm gonna say to the board, um. Do you wanna meet in September, what would you like to do, your next board meeting is September fourteenth?
We're gonna do the marijuana stuff, you gotta do that sooner than the middle of the course.
So we would do it, what, we could do the last workshop, we did the week before.
It's gonna get intense in September.
Monday, the sixth.
It's gonna get intense in September.
What's gonna be intense?
The work that we need to do, I'm like, uh, we're on the seventh.
Um, it's a board meeting. Looking for today, we could go to the twenty fourth, the thirty first of August.
No, no, we're looking in September.
What, uh, can we consider August, even though we only have one meeting, because some of us have a lot of.
I, I really, uh, I'm on vacation next week and then I start teaching the, the week after that.
All right.
The week of the thirtieth is okay.
August thirtieth? Oh, well, I was gonna try to take a vacation, but I don't think that's gonna happen anymore.
Well, we can, we should honor your vacation. Uh, what about Thursday, this, the ninth?
Oh, okay, maybe that one, how about the nineteenth, everybody? That's Thursday, the ninth of September?
Okay.
That, that actually, that could work.
And what time would the board like to meet, six thirty or as early?
Later, um, I teach until six oh five at the university, so six thirty is really the earliest, I'll probably be a little late.
Just kidding.
Yeah, that's okay.
Six thirty.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's a good time also for the public, because it's have to work for people.
Okay.
You know, you don't need me at that time, do you?
Probably not.
If you do, then you just wanna do it. I would think you would.
Yeah.
You'd be worried more about input than.
Yeah, no, it's really just a.
Okay, and I will add the memo to the agenda for everything for this, the marijuana information we have so far, the same information, um, anything else in the board would like to hear.
Great.
Well, yeah, that'll.
So how, how is we going through the process of actually, who is setting up the Google document and how are we inviting people to it? One of the people on this board, do you guys want me to do that?
Renee, it was done for the code, right?
Yeah, Justin, Justin and Dan, and, uh, Justin was on the planning board and Dan.
Yeah.
So what email addresses do we use for that, do we use our trustee one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, will that work for Google Docs?
I, I don't know, it will.
Oh.
They won't work.
Yeah, we need it, we need it, Google.
Yeah.
In that.
That's right. Hmm. To be determined.
You don't wanna use your personal one.
Yeah.
But nothing is transpiring in email, everything is transpiring on a publicly facing document.
I don't know.
What?
Bring, we'll, we'll.
I, I mean.
So we work this out, but in some.
There's a huge advantage to doing this in that we don't, and this is, first of all, this is the way the world works. Second of all, um, we don't walk in the door at the starting line, we've already put our comments in, we've already said all these things, so, look, I think it is entirely defensible that it is sent to our um, Gmail addresses. Nothing is transpiring in email, it's, it's in a public document, and if Justin makes a comment, it will have Justin Likeb right next to it, and if Lisa makes one, it will say Lisa Flummer.
Would that be more comfortable?
I'm just trying to figure out if anybody can pierce that.
I get what you're saying, because I like that idea.
I mean, I, I don't want, probably if you don't want anybody piercing that and getting to your
Personal.
Personal email.
None of the communication happens in email, other than. So we're talking about this level, right?
Right, it would be access to the document as long as no business is conducted on the email.
Okay, now, here's, here's another option, what you could do is set up trustee D. Keating, village of Pittsburgh, at gmail dot com. Trustee J. Likeb, at gmail dot com. So that.
It may be a much happier.
It is entirely dedicated to village stuff related to.
That's perfect.
Yeah, that would be good.
And that one, we can also use it in the future for other Google Docs, as we're working with.
Correct.
And then how would people be aware to be able to view that, so it doesn't look like we're deliberating?
Well, we're, we're not, we're, in other words, it's a, it's a, Google Doc is public.
I, I can answer that.
Okay.
There is a link to that document, and, and what we can do is say, these people are able to edit the document, and everybody is able to see the document.
Because we probably know that they can, that this document exists and where they should go to view it.
You, you, a link.
We can post, post it.
You can post a link on our website, you can send it on an email, and you could post it on a.
Well, I, I don't think the document needs to be publicly available until you do something with it, it's working here first. You, it's not a set policy, you don't wanna have ten versions of the public comment out there. Um, well, I think you can just, you, you see what I'm saying, the one they're reviewing at the time. Well, I think you can just, you see what I'm saying? The one they're reviewing at the time of the meeting can be made available. Because you don't want, you know, what if they go in there, there's some comments you put in, and when you're changing, but these aren't permanent, and this is, you can add. It's going to.
But was this the board's termally working?
Dan said that nobody could have access to it, but.
He, they just said they.
You can make it either way.
Well, then, then if you just make it access to these five.
Just to the board. When you go to adopt, or you're viewing in public, you can make that version available.
Yeah, when we talk, we want it run by everybody.
Hold on, I wonder if you understand this. I do understand that. We're talking about it being generally available to the public through the link, but only these five can edit.
Well, that's one way to do it. Another way to do it, you're still shaking your head, is what she said.
Yeah, let's hear Dorothea one more time.
Okay, my concern, that document is going to keep changing, and then the suggestions back and forth, that is not, it's working document.
Right, I get that.
It's just not the final version, or a version put in front of the board to discuss. I think it's just going to confuse everyone.
Okay, that's, that was the point I was trying to figure out, what the point was.
I think it's just going to lead to confusion. It's the same reason I hate putting multiple packets up, it leads to confusion. Someone got this packet, and this packet. Not that the public isn't smart, but let's not make it even more difficult for them, because you're going to go through many irrita- irrita- irrita.
Get a raise.
And the irritation.
Yeah, so you want to make sure the one you really want the public to review is the one you really want them to view. They might go back, well, we liked the version you had three times ago. It's, it's, to me, it's going to lead to more confusion. I don't. It's not eliminating the public, it's, this is just your working document. It's kind of like your budget, it's working document.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing it that way.
No, but I just think it's very confusing.
No, no, I mean, nothing wrong doing it the way you said it.
Correct.
So, I think it's up to the board how they want to do it.
Yeah, because when we did the code, we had those huge worksheets, and we made them public at the end, right? Not while we were working on them.
I don't know, I thought it was shared during. It was shared during it, and it was. Yeah, nobody looked at it. Nobody looked at it.
That's a different story.
I worked it out real.
Of course you did, yeah.
And to, to Dorothea's point. Yeah, we want them looking at it when there's something to react to. We need to be able to make comments, because otherwise, we need an incentive. We need for it to be good for us to throw ideas out, and the other person react to it, and say, no, no, no. I don't like that, strike this, and that would get very muddied. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to set up the Gmail accounts for trustees, and, oh, you guys go first.
One more here.
And.
That's fine. Didn't get you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're setting up those accounts, we'll get that kind of lined up.
Um, is each board member going to set up their own Google account, or is this?
I'll set one.
Yep.
I think, okay, sure.
And if anybody needs help, just ask them.
To do them all the same, because then it's all in the same structure.
I mean, I can get Marina do it, and we can send it out to you.
Marina, sorry.
As far as the content that's being shared here, I want to go back to the point about the sample rules of procedure. So, in NICOM's recommendation, the part of this is the guideline for public comment. There's also what day of the month the meeting is held, how minutes are taken, what they include. It's basically three more pages, plus what we've already got in terms of the public comment guidelines. NICOM does say that a public body may wish to make its rules of procedure more extensive, but at the very least, any rules of procedure should, at a minimum, address the topics identified in the sample, in the sample. So I, again, I want to go back to, since we're adopting a part of this, we don't have to adopt the whole thing, but I do believe that we should have all of the sample rules of procedure, in case we want to adopt something that more holistically addresses the needs of meetings and the surrounding process.
Justin, nobody has restricted you, everybody has said, yeah, just put down what you want, what you want in there, and then we start editing it as a team.
Can we also put the NICOM sample rules of procedure in the next meeting?
Yes, I can include.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Can I make a, and again, I apologize for doing this, because it doesn't seem necessary, but.
Nobody's resisting me.
Well, you know, I want to say that, but I've actually requested that a few things be in the agenda, and they have not been dealt there.
I know what that feels like.
I, I.
I'm sorry, what was requested isn't in the agenda, because I tried to include everything.
Let's, so I'll just make a motion that we add the sample rules of procedure to the workshop material.
For September 1st?
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Was the second coming in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Sounds like we're going to have Village Trustee Workshop on overnight.
Exactly. That's right.
Um, we have, before we go on, I'm getting a bunch of things coming in through the virtual world. I guess I'm going to leave it to the board if they want to hear from me what's going on.
Is it related to this particular?
This I can't tell you. Emily Diaz says, may I speak? So there's no topic involved. Simone said she knows some issue with sound tonight. We said the mask helping, is the post catching, and electronic, here the hears and types of transcription. What is written is relatively senseless. Emily Diaz, the only owner of the document, needs a Gmail account, so you could use a generic village of Pittsburgh at Gmail account, and the link can be shared with any type of email account, that doesn't have to be a Gmail account.
The challenge there is that the comments, oh yeah, no, I know what she's saying, she's right. Let's do it this way, it's cleaner.
Yeah, I mean, I think we simply set up it's workable for everybody, you know, I think, I think everything's set up to be workable for everybody. So, I think we have something, you know, in place to go forward. Yeah.
Justin Belisha, isn't editing a document as a group at a meeting opens meeting wrong? I don't, so. Dave Ferris, your discussion is an attempt to circumvent the open meetings, but I do a workshop. I don't think we're trying to circumvent, we are going to do a workshop.
We're doing.
We're just talking about the document. Um, Emily Diaz, another thing to consider, and a first thing, and using Microsoft Office already is sheer point.
Thank you, Emily. We'll talk about that offline.
Dave Ferris said question and answer, so I think that's all the comments.
I have strong feelings about that.
I sense that from you. I do, okay, thank you, okay.
We're at more than two hours, can I propose a five minute break?
A stretch, to stand up.
A stretch break, if anybody can move.
Member items, we have notes, we have a couple other.
We got it.
Okay, is there a motion to recess?
Can I ask a question? Do you need your stay?
I think we're good. Thanks, Jeff, so much.
Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, we have a second vote?
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee, um, trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye. Five minute recess.
Thanks.
Pretty hardy.
It's controlling my volume.
Okay, but that's, there are two volumes.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, so.
Call the meeting back to order.
Oh, sex.
Are we, are we recording this?
We're still recording.
Oh, we are, okay, okay, great. Wow, where do we leave off? Okay, um, the rest of you report, anything else, Dorthea?
That's.
We're good, okay.
Can you remind me again when you all are going to be at the conference? Because that's going to be most of the office staff that's up for.
September 20th.
20th, I think.
The 20th.
Okay, so right after that here, so you're here for that hearing.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
So not a one, it was the 24th.
So not a week before we have a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes it a little better, I thought it was.
Okay, go on, no, I have to do that.
Yep, there we go, okay, so, uh, let's see, do we want to just go through minutes real quick? Let's strip those down?
Yep.
Does everybody thank you for reviewing and giving comments?
I had, I had another couple because I'm not sure I was looking at a complete packet. I may have been looking at the wrong one, so I had a few more edits.
Okay, all the edits I received have been made in the latest packet.
Okay, so let's start with April 14th, did you have anything to add, anybody on April 14th?
I submitted all of my comments.
Yeah, and I appreciate everybody kind of, you know, going back in on that. So we're, was there anything you had?
I can just hear you.
Okay, Dan, just use one sec, we just maybe had a little extra.
I have no comments on the 14th.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the April 14th minutes?
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye. Okay, so move, uh, May 25th minutes. Thank you again for everybody's feedback and comments. Dan, anything you wanted to?
Hold on, it's a very long one.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
No, nothing on that one.
Is there a motion to approve the May 25th minutes?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the June 1st minutes?
I was going to ask you if there's.
Okay, is there a motion before us for the June 1st minutes to be?
Oh.
Thank you, one second, please.
Second.
Oh, one second.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
I abstained because I wasn't there, I don't think, the other one, yeah, June 1st.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed you. Okay, Trustee Keating?
Uh, aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
June 8th, are there any additions?
Yeah, this is, this is one where I would note on, um, I'm trying to figure out which page it is. It's 75 Monroe Avenue Meeting Planning, it's three or four pages in, and it's under Dave Marshall's comments. Do you see it there?
Aye, from Dave Marshall's.
Okay, so there's a paragraph that says, "Trustee Keating stated that it is uncommon to send a presentation ahead of time." I just wouldn't say it that way.
Do you want to amend that, or would you like?
Just, just do, "Trustee Keating stated that he is in favor of allowing them to walk before through the presentation." That was the gist of what I was saying.
Okay.
Any, any other amendments?
Yeah, on, um, on, at the very end of that, um, the motion seconded, motion by Trustee Keating, seconded by Trustee Stetser. You see, it's in the last page of June 8th, it's the second to last paragraph.
Five-minute recess? Which one are you?
No.
Okay.
Um, the motion did not carry.
Yep, no, I corrected that, the motion failed.
That, that was all had on June 8th.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the June 8th minutes?
I have a motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Uh, aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
June 22nd minutes, are there any amendments or corrections?
Yes.
No, okay, is there a motion to approve the June 22nd?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the June 30th minutes, are there any amendments or corrections?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the June 30th minutes?
I will.
Second.
I can.
Okay.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, July 30th minutes, are there any amendments?
No, I'm sorry, you don't have those yet.
Oh, you're right, you don't, okay, so we're up to.
Final edit, just make.
That's right, that's right, well, so we really ripped through six meetings pretty fast. Okay.
That's good.
Okay, thanks, everybody, let's see, next up, the Shane Place assessment report.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if it shows up on this one, yeah, here it is, okay.
This was just needed to be in place to help us make an argument to the DOT.
Yes, that was the purpose of this, to show that there was additional traffic, significant traffic, wear and tear caused by the, or caused by the bridge works.
And do we feel it shows that?
Yep. Yes, there's a significance, in fact, I think, what was the bottom line, it was 275 vehicles during the peak hour, you know, above and beyond what had been recorded prior, uh, prior to the, you know, construction. So I think, I think it makes a compelling sort of first cut of the case, because this is now what we're doing, is sort of setting this up, so when we have the North Main Bridge, uh, working down, I hope it will be this spring, that's what they're, they're planning on. We know, again, Shane Place is going to have a lot of additional traffic, so this just helps us to, you know, I think, kind of lay the groundwork, um, to make the case with NYSOD that we really are, want to be soliciting funds for help with the repairs of Shane Place. So.
Yeah, so the action item, SRF, just right now, this is a draft.
Right.
So maybe any, if you saw any glaring mistakes or have feedback that you think should be incorporated, so that they can take the draft off of it, and it says, "Fine on," and then the village can do what it will with it.
Are there any amendments or corrections that anybody sees for this particular draft, really, do you have a question?
Question.
Sure.
When SRF does the proposal, the draft, the second draft of the final, do they also give suggestions to, the sense are odd, and only ironic, suggestions to the DOT, which is a funny, uh, similar, I make sort of a phrase, suggestions to the DOT, uh, regarding what their recommendations might be, they might offer chip seal, they might offer a repave, they might offer, or should we say this is what we, our expectation is? Just repair potholes and certain sections, or?
That's a really good question, my understanding of SRF is that they're really just looking at, at traffic and the impact that their construction has had on, on Shane Place relative to additional wear and tear that was above and beyond, in terms of making any additional recommendations about how they would repair this.
They won't do that, and that's up to us to say, this is what we would like to see.
Well, this also comes through our DPW as well, which they're concerned about the entire road threat.
Right, okay.
You know, so it would be, you know, Shane Place, we have three streets that really, really need some work south, as we know, and we've all been telling ourselves, up Southland, of course, and then Shane, and so, um, you know, this, this would be helping us assess, and also helping us to make the case.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, that will recommend to the board?
Yes.
What he feels needs to be done.
Yes, and, and probably working with Scott Harder as well, you know, in other words, he's our village engineer, and just really putting together sort of an entire plan, really, for Shane Place, because I think, frankly, at this point, we're beyond just.
Beyond town, and everything else, all together.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a good question, though, because it definitely is going to need work.
I did have a question on here about the data that was collected after the bridge was open, so I want to, I, I thought it would be worth asking David why that was in there, or, you know, it wasn't the, the volume of the traffic, I think it was, that a hourly automatic traffic recorder volumes, they were collected, um, after the bridge opened, so.
On those, those particular ones?
Yeah, yeah.
You want to get back, back to him?
They may need to just put an explanation.
Elaborate on that, so, so the action item then would be to get back with David, do you feel comfortable following, looking at him and asking about that?
Yep.
Okay, so, the action item is Renee, it's just going to get back with SRF, I just, for some clarification on that, um, with proper clarification, would, would you be ready to approve this? I mean, we all, you know, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's good data, and I think it helps us move forward, is what we want to do.
There may be an explanation, or?
Yeah, yeah, I think you could just shoot, shoot an email to all of us, just so we know kind of how we're closing it all out, okay?
So are we doing a conditional?
Yeah.
Or approving that pending this?
Just an additional clarification.
Clarification, okay.
There's a motion.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to approve this, would be amended.
Sorry, I can't do two things at the same time.
No, 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 that's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, SRF Shane Place wear and tear study, yeah, that's all, uh, pending clarification of the data that was collected after the, the bridge reopened.
One second.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, Village pavement marking plan review proposal from SRF. It could be awkward, be, I, yeah, let me just say a couple of things about, NYSOD kind of sprung this, oh, you all want complete streets, don't you, so, South Main Street, we're just going to eliminate all the parking, all along South Main, from, uh, Jefferson Road, down to, was it to?
Main Street, uh-huh. Jeff, to, no, to, um, that is not.
No, 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 to, um.
Uh, oh my gosh, what is?
To, to, uh, Locust.
Locust, thanks.
The Locust Street.
It's another tree, I think.
So we all went, what? And, um, could have been a little bit of a setup on that, I don't know, but, so, we said, well, wait a second here, we, we really want to revisit this, you know, we have churches, we have neighbors, and, you know.
And it calms, I mean, it calms traffic to have, to have parking.
To have parking, and they, they also brought up, um, that the part of South Main, I believe, from roughly around, um, 70 South Main Street down to Jefferson, the parking spaces are too narrow, they don't even meet current guidelines for the delineation, actually, of the space, because the road, actually, South Main tapers down to that intersection, yeah, I know, so.
Okay.
So, you know, there's a few moving parts to this, so, you know, I know you were thinking about, that was part of your question, but that's, that's sort of how I'll prove it out.
Another entity that might want to weigh in.
Yeah, thank, yeah, absolutely.
And SRF, I understand, is looking through one lens, to say about walkability and so forth, but I think our merchants and business owners.
Wow, absolutely, absolutely.
Have input that they would like to provide.
Exactly, yeah, that's what we made up.
Yeah, so we, this is the initial step, so that we're saying we have weighed in, we've got the, uh, you know, the engineering, the traffic engineer expertise, um, and then we can, um, discuss this further as a, as a board, so this is just the initial step.
Sure.
I mean, I, we have our personal opinions about the, the need to keep parking there, um, I, I think we need to do whatever we can, um, I would like to have the expert opinion, um, so that we can say we've done our due diligence, and here are the pros and cons, um, particularly for that area.
Yeah, and, and again, the, the piece, I think, that is probably worth addressing in some fashion, is the safety issue of the parking that's very close to that Jefferson Road-South Main intersection.
Yeah.
Where it doesn't meet code, and I can tell you, because I lived down in that area, the, the side swipes of parked cars was always something going on.
Yeah, yeah.
So that may be one little piece of it, but the whole enchilada, we definitely need to get input.
Yeah, the businesses.
From everybody, you know.
We need to keep parking, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So anyway, this is the first initial step, we talked about, um, getting an estimate last meeting, and so here's, here's the estimate, they can get started, um, uh, it'll take them about 10 days, once we give them the green light, if we, um, agree with this estimate, we did budget for engineering $4,500 in our budget, we spent $950 on the Shane Place study, so we got about $4,500 left in that, in that envelope, um, for, for engineering, or for contractual engineering, um, so this is a $1,400 estimate, if you have any questions, all you have to do is approve it, and then I can give them the green light.
I think it's important, it's one of our main traits, you know, I mean.
Make a motion that we approve the, um, the expenditure for that product, if it's necessarily necessary, what was back in the room for, this is, what do they call it, the South Main?
They call it the striking, the, uh, the striking plan for 96, I think they call it Pittsburgh pavement marking.
Pittsburgh pavement marking.
I'll second that motion.
Vote, please.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for coordinating on this, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, man. Okay, grant projects, Senator Brooks.
I'm scared of her.
She's not in the power, just got the money, okay, uh, grant projects, um, I received a call from Senator Brooks' office, um, there is some additional funds, uh, available potentially through her office for, uh, grants, um, for our village, or for a number of municipalities, but I'm thinking of our village, uh, the grants range roughly, in terms of awards, from about $25,000, potentially up to $100,000, uh, again, these are grants where we put the money upfront, um, and then we coop, and we are reimbursed, you know, through the dormitory down the road, um, so I just want to let everybody know that there is something out there, we do have some additional funds that have come in, we also have some of the ARPA money, we're trying to figure out some of the best ways to approach this, um, I will say that they're very interested in, you know, ADA compliance, maybe, or roads, sidewalks, you know, that kind of thing, um, they've sort of felt that that would fly, um, Dorthea, you were also with them some of that, too, see, may want to chime in a little bit, but.
No, it's kind of our discussions, and the office has been looking at some of our street projects coming up, I think South Street is primarily concerned.
Yeah.
And it might be work line to do the sidewalks and the ADA compliance there, because that could amount to around a hundred grand, um, we're going to have to budget to do this, so, you know, what a better way to recoup and, you know, get the money back to apply to another street down the road.
Right.
So I think it's worth putting in the time and effort and requesting the funds from them, or at least looking at, South Street immediately pops to mind.
Yes, we'd like to follow up on that, and I, that's why we just wanted to bring it back to the board, saying, you know, we'll come up, we'll come up with a few ideas here, um, and then what, what they have requested is that I would write, you know, just sort of a narrative letter of what we are interested in doing, what types of projects for our village, and, and with a rough estimate for the funding that we would be seeking, and, um, they're, they're, they have a specific grant person that would be willing to work with us to kind of guide us through, so, just wanted to bring that back to everybody, I think it's great.
Lighting under the bridge would be another good one.
Lighting under the bridge came up as well, yeah, exactly.
Looked at some of the stormwater repairs as well.
Yep.
You know, the office funds, that is something we can use, so, that might be a wise use of the ARPA funds, and move budgeted money into a reserve to go to some of these street projects, but, you know, there's a lot of numbers that's dancin' around, the projects we can do, obviously.
Yeah, we have a long list, so, anyway, just wanted to give you, you all.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's great, so we're, we're, let's see, what else? Member, yes.
Before you can get, do, remember, can we go, who signs this, you sign it, and then do I send it to, so, do you print the SRF, I'm sorry.
I can print the SRF for the mayor and get her sign it, and I can send it out to him.
Perfect.
Yeah, we can get that in the morning, a heads up, pass that.
Yeah, perfect, I'm going to, if you want it, David, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 let's close it out, absolutely.
I already noted it.
Okay, member items.
I do have a couple of new ones.
Sure.
Um, so, first of all, I, I wanted to circle back to the, the public comment, uh, section for a moment, and again, it seems like we have, uh, two different things, there's the rules that we're considering, as well as the rules that we're under right now, and since I started observing meetings, I, I really haven't seen rules be strictly interpreted, it, it, it does seem to have been very permissive about allowing people opportunities to speak, um, and I wanted to see how this board felt about perhaps loosening some of the rules from 2016, uh, that were implemented, so that we could allow more people to speak, specifically following some of the NICOM guidelines, um, I think that in, in 2016, we adopted these rules, um, we didn't really enforce them all that much, and we were pretty permissive with it, um, and, and since then, uh, NICOM has changed, and, and we haven't been enforcing our rules, uh, until very recently, and.
Justin, this is, I'm sorry to interrupt, this is what we're going to talk about, I don't, how can we be more clear that we've got a workshop set up, we've got a Google Doc in place, we're going to all start talking about this, and that is the time for this, we've now, we've now kind of heard a version of this several times, what, what else would you like to say that, that we need to have in place before we get to the workshop moving?
Sure, well, there, uh, thank you for, for asking, that was my next point, um, the, the rules that we're under seem to be, uh, very restrictive to me, and I think that even for, um, you know, we may not decide at the next meeting, at the workshop meeting, exactly what we want to do, so I wanted this board to, um, consider a, a few different, um, changes to the rules that are in place, uh, for example, we've got a, a three-minute limit, um, we only had, uh, four different people, I, I think, speaking today, uh, in the beginning of the meeting, it's not a lot of people who want to participate, and I don't think that it would be a problem to expand it to five minutes, which incidentally is what NICOM recommends, um, and in fact, they say this time limit may be changed to accommodate the number of speakers.
So we should move that to an agenda item, again, this is member items, and you may recall in the attorney-client session, that we do not transact business during member items, so if that is something you would like to move forward, because again, you brought this in as a member item in a different way, for us, for this board to make a decision, the public has not had an opportunity to see this as an agenda item, and again, I refer back to the attorney, and Dorthea, you can maybe respond to this as well, we can certainly put that on the next agenda, so the public is aware that this is something we want to do.
Well, I don't.
We cannot vote on this, it is, it is against the open meetings law to vote on a, a, a member item that hasn't been even showing up on the agenda, the public has no awareness of this.
Well, interestingly.
That was made apparent in the, in the session that we had with Jeff, that we, member items are generally speaking administrative, they're update items, it's, we're interested in doing this, let's put it on the next agenda, we do not transact business under member items.
Well, interestingly, when I did pull up the, uh, the meeting in 2016, when we adopted these rules of procedure, it was during member items.
Shouldn't have been.
Should we repeal them until we have time to consider, uh, further rules to procedure?
We can't repeal anything tonight either, I, I, you know, I, I don't know how, how else to, to clarify this, member items are essentially administrative items, where, you know, there's an update, like, you know, Renee might say, gee, we, we ended up moving the bike racks here, we do not vote or transact business, because the public has not been made aware of anything in a member item, it, it should be formally agended, and, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we did not understand that from Jeff Turner in that attorney-client session, so, I, we hear what you're saying, but I, I am not comfortable voting on something that the public hasn't even been. voting on something that the public hasn't even been made aware of in what is essentially supposed to be under member items, regardless of what a board did in the past. Regardless, we now know and have been apprised from legal counsel that we do not conduct business that way during member items. And I stand, I stand by that.
Unless it's an emergency.
Well, an emergency is something quite different. This is not considered an emergency. I, you know, there's no, nothing's falling down here. We certainly can put it on the next agenda.
Well, I think the five-minute, you're saying, you're proposing that we discuss a five-minute extension. Does that need, are you thinking that needs to happen before our workshop meeting? Because we don't have another meeting until our workshop meeting.
There, some of these things, yeah, I think that it is useful to allow people to express a complete thought and that's a little bit difficult to do within three minutes.
Well, then wait, well, then it would be, to me, it would be even just saying, okay, we'll let people finish their, their thoughts, you know? And I think Lindsey Graham brought that up tonight. So why wouldn't we just do that rather than, I just am concerned that somehow we, we start to bleed over what it means to vote on things and how we're conducting business when we have been told by our legal counsel to not do it. So I, I stand with that absolutely. During a workshop, people want to go for a little over three minutes to finish up a little something? Okay. But I, I don't want to conduct the business this way. I don't think it's right.
Okay, so what, what you're suggesting, I think I'm hearing is, is that night, the night of the workshop, for instance, we decided by consensus that we're extended speaking for that evening.
Right. Why couldn't we do it right down in there? Why wouldn't we do it down there? It's for the public.
Right. And so then, subsequently, then we would say, gee, we're kind of happy with the way that worked out. So let's make that our policy from, from now on. But that night, the point, I think, I don't want to put words in your, that you're trying to say is that for the purposes of this workshop, it probably would feel good to be able to not limit, nobody's going to filibuster.
Right.
Yes, I disagree with that. I vehemently disagree with that.
Not on filibuster. We all know that one. Right.
I know.
But within reason.
Right.
That we would extend it to maybe five minutes or whatever it's suggested.
As long as there's some kind of limit.
Sure, sure.
The, the problem is, is going on and on and on.
So.
And, and then a comment is made and then another set of comments from.
So, so again, I'm going to say this, and I think it'll be now the third time. We can put this forward on the next agenda. When is that? It's at the workshop. I don't know how else to say that. You have said it as well. Can we do that? Does that make sense? I think that's the most practical way for us to all move forward.
With that, for the purposes of.
That is helpful. I think.
Okay.
Right. It popped into my head when you were talking.
Okay, so I have a member item you have?
I did have one other member item. And I would like to request an executive session for the purpose of talking about the performance of a specific employee.
Okay.
I'll second.
But are we going to do that right now or do we want to do that?
That's what I heard.
At the end, whenever it's.
Hang on, hang on.
I would say the board should finish their member items and make a motion going executive session. It's on the meeting unless you're going to be taking action after the executive session.
Excellent.
Okay, so we're going to hold that out. Okay, just to get everybody through the, yeah. Other member items?
Do you have something, Lily?
I do have one. Yes, I probably noticed that last week I put up a little sign on the oak tree just to let the public know what was probably going to be occurring. So it wasn't a huge shock all of a sudden. And so I received probably 25 or 30 of little notes, year old notes.
Yeah, same.
And a village resident is also obligated to help me put together a little notebook or something that we can give the village.
Perfect, perfect.
As a mentor, memory of the tree.
Yep. Right. No, that's really great. And also, you know, once we really kind of come up with a plan for like the lumber, that's what everybody knows.
We got that, yes.
All of that. Yeah, that's wonderful. Thanks for doing that. I think it's really sweet and it's helpful, you know?
Well, that's why, that's what makes us the village, I think.
I think so. And, is that it?
Hmm?
And that's it? Renee, you're done?
I don't have.
I'm done. Oh, okay, okay.
I've got, I've got three. And I don't expect answers for these, but I just want to kind of throw them out there. The first is that I'm just not comfortable being in Village Hall, sitting at a table when Zoom is a good option. I know that the executive order ran out, but that there's got to be, given COVID, I'm, I'm really not comfortable with this. I don't see the necessity for it. So I really would like us to brainstorm how there might be a remote option. I know that there are things that you have to notice if we're doing it from home. And so I'd like to know what those things are because I, I really would rather do these meetings from home personally, given safety.
I, I understand your concern. Right now, the only thing we can do, and we have to post the meeting, post where you're going to be, you have to open it up to the public. And I don't think that's what you want to do.
No, I, I do. That's fine with me.
You want to open your home and let the public come in?
That's absolutely fine with me. Nobody's going to do it.
I'm just saying that's.
And if somebody does do it, then I just won't, I'll just hang up or I'll come down here. No, nobody's going to want to come into my house and sit in my house while I have a meeting.
You know, anything is possible. That's.
But I don't want that to be a reason that I have to sit in this room.
Right now, given we had to go back to the regulations, the executive order expired, there's nothing in place. I don't know if they're going to add anything. I mean, I can reach out to NICOM, but I think we go back to the old ways. So if that's what you want to do, then yes, I'd be happy to post it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's follow up with NICOM. You know, things are changing kind of rapidly. So, you know.
And it's possible, well, the cases will go down, that we get another spike and we'll have to do this again. So it should be, I mean, I'm sure we're not the only village I'm thinking about this.
Not, you know, a lot of things that happened with this happened quickly. We went into allowing the remote sessions to ending like boom, you know, all the villages were told, oh, you'll have time. Next thing you know, it's taken away.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And there's, you know, chaos and.
Mayhem. Yeah, especially for small, I mean, it's.
No, 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 I mean with our governor who sounded that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So how about if Dorothy, just double check with NICOM. Let's make sure that we can do the posting, you know, just to make sure we're sort of dotting the i's and crossing the t's for anybody who does wish to, to do this, you know, I respect everybody's feelings on this.
I will double check those rules as to where and make sure if your home is okay, what is okay.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I don't want you to change one public location for another public location. I, I give you a good to opening up your home, but I don't even know that's allowed.
Right. Or, or perhaps be in a different room. So be, be in the mayor's office.
Yeah, maybe something like that.
That's nice.
Somebody, somebody's upstairs, somebody's in there. They're, they're just options.
Okay, let's, we'll follow up with NICOM and we'll, let's turn it around so we'll make sure that it's in place.
One, one other question, I think I throw this out once a year. Do we need two meetings a month? Or could we get by regularly scheduled one meeting a month and then workshops as necessary? These meetings, because, let, let me tell you why. They're no shorter when we do more of them or less of them. It's not like this one's going to take three and a half hours, but if we didn't do it, the next one would take two. They're all three and a half hours.
I asked Dorothy and Marina to take a look at, because I think you really raised a very good question at, at how many meetings, because it also came up with the fact that, you know, where are the minutes and what's going on and what are, what are, how many, how many just meetings should we have?
I have the information just handy.
Yeah.
Okay, 2018, the village board had 48 meetings.
And that was the.
That was just in general. No, no, that's not code. That's not even code.
Here, uh, here, uh, this is.
So four meetings a month?
Basically, yes. Now, if we look at, this is two meetings a month, 12 months, 24 meetings, we have five months that we do one, but add in we have workshops for budget. So you probably should be around 24 meetings. That would be a fair count. Okay. 2019, 64 meetings. That was COVID. 2020, COVID didn't even slow you down. We went to 32. Right now, we're at 22 for 2021. So we're still on pace. We meet far more I guess than any other municipal village. And it's talking to my counterparts.
Oh, here's how, here's how.
Your minutes average, and you know, this is what editing and we're looking at different ways of doing the minutes and reflecting to the NICOM rules, you know, we put a lot into the minutes and I'm thinking we put too much in because honestly, it's not necessary.
Well, we already have the video.
About nine to 10 pages per meeting. That's a lot of dialogue. There's a lot of stuff that has to be checked, double checked. You know, we don't post minutes prior to approval because we don't want the wrong set of minutes out there. We don't want a draft out there that totally changes. It's, you know, goes to public confusion.
I just want to interject very quickly. Also, we now have, you know, videos for everybody can go in and just watch the video and make sure that they're getting, you know, any additional information.
Correct. If they want detail, they got our video.
Right.
And we're trying to get those posted up quickly. I will apologize. There's time. My posting, one sec, not set. We really need to update the way we do the website, but we have to take time away from doing minutes and editing and all that too. It's a, it's a very difficult thing.
I would think also that we might end up making a lot of extra meetings because applicants come in and we want to set a public hearing for them. And if we're not, it's not till the next month.
Yeah.
That just makes the timeline a lot longer for them. So this way, it's much time efficient for that, for applicants rather than being put off till the next month.
That's the only thing that made me say, yeah, we got to keep twice a month for most of the time. But I wonder if we could, I wonder, and this is a half-baked idea. I haven't really thought this through. If we went to once a month, but then like tonight, we had three people that went to a public hearing. And so in that case, we'd say, okay, we're going to do a second meeting this month. But in general, it would be once a month. And then if we need the second one, we would add it. I don't know.
And Justin, getting back to what you were saying, maybe this is in the workshop again, let's take, let's revisit this.
Okay.
You know, because, you know, again, it goes back to how many meetings, how we run it, you know, all of that. So maybe that's part of the whole package too.
Right. And I do have the information for PZB and HBB. They're meeting, they meet less than us, but they're meeting quite consistently for our boards. It should be meeting once a month, you know, 15, 18, 12, eight. And eight's just this year if they're still on track. HBB, 13, 14, 12, 10. So we're doing a lot of special meetings. We're doing a lot of meeting in general. So this is very active. We've been active with Zoom. We've been active across the board. So this is a, you know, it's not complaining. Okay, I did complain when we hit the 64. But no, this board does meet a lot and there's a lot that goes into meetings, especially during COVID. There was transcripts, minutes, you know, everything involved. So.
And I understand before we went to Zoom, you know, they, they literally had to transcript an entire meeting.
Word for word.
Word for word.
And none of the transcripts.
For every board.
None of the transcripts provided by the systems are anywhere near accurate, you know?
Yeah.
We do our best. But anyway, so that's giving you a full picture. You're, you're a very busy board. So I think that's part of wanting to use your time wisely.
And again, I think it was your suggestion and we did, you know, like the workshop, for example, instead of holding like a special meeting, a special meeting, get the workshop, kind of pull things together.
Yeah, pull your stuff together. It's a meeting. You do the business at the meeting and move it along. You have something to present to the folks so they can really see it. You hammered it out. You didn't do the legwork behind the scenes.
Okay, so maybe we could all just think about that and maybe there's a solution. The third thing is I, I got a call from Chris DiMarzo about the public meeting in 75 Monroe. And, you know, he, he's, his initial reaction was he's inclined not to do it, not to take part in it because, and I'm paraphrasing his words, the, you know, there hasn't been a willingness by the other boards to meet with him. And so he's curious about that until there are complete plans. Now.
There is.
There is, and they, yeah, so.
There's.
Okay, so that's information I didn't know. The general, my general feeling on this is to be out in the open on it is, you know, this idea that the plans have to be perfect doesn't make sense to me because we're not at that stage. And I would, I really hope that all the boards meet. And, and look, I'm not trying to influence a vote. I'm trying to influence them to sit down though, because I think it's the right thing to do. Because at this stage, those boards have more influence than they do if it goes farther downstream. So the, the more he gets closer, the more money he spends, and this is my guess, the more money he spends on putting precise plans together, the less flexible he will get in terms of a final concept and that kind of thing. So I would hope our boards would want to take a look at what he has and influence it. And, and that's why I've, I've been confused by the reticence and the hesitancy with sitting down to talk. So that's, I just wanted that in the public.
Well, Dorothy, Chris was in the office, what, a couple of days ago?
Correct.
And he dropped off additional.
Documentation for the historic preservation board for Thursday.
Yeah, and, and that may be publicly, publicly known for quite a while.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I think there really are moving forward and I think, you know, I'm sure.
How about the PZBA? Have they been having with them?
We haven't heard, we haven't heard yet, but I think, I think they may have been waiting on what the HBB was saying too. I mean, you know, who knows? But, you know, it's up to them.
Nothing that I've heard for HBB.
Yeah.
I mean, PZBA, so.
Yeah, but HBB's, you know.
HBB is scheduled for Thursday. We're pressing our fingers. We don't have a full rank and we're moving forward.
Yeah.
You know, we'll be zoomed.
Yeah, and we'll be zoomed exactly.
Okay, thanks.
I have two last comments from the public board who like to hear it. When, both are from Sue Amos. She wants to go on record to thank Trustee Lightgate for his persistence for having seen for the residents. It's disappointing, insulting, see resistance against him. Trustee Lightgate is being bullied and as a citizen of the village, I reject. Please respect one another, be patient with one another and be mature and professional in your manner. Dave Marshall also submitted, if not a member of our agenda items, sign upon, do all members get the end items in the agenda? And so can that, yes, members can end items in the agenda right after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think any, I want to go on the record. I don't think anybody was disrespectful to Justin. You know, we've been over the same material a few times. I don't think anybody was bullying Justin. I, I don't think anybody's resisting Justin.
I think, I think we had an opportunity to move a lot of the things forward, frankly. I do have, everybody's, okay, I just have a couple of quick member items. There is, it circled back, this whole through weight authority, being interested in doing the clear cutting, aligning canal. So it is a little bit different this time because initially it was really affecting mostly the towns on the canal. Now they are indicating that they feel comfortable clear cutting through villages, through anything. So I did have a, a meeting with Bill Smith about this. There is going to be sort of a, kind of a gathering, I guess, at Embankment Park on Sunday at 1:00. And I think, you know, town leaders are going to be there, you know, just sort of the grassroots people that are really want to stand up to this. And I just wanted to let the board know, this is, this is really coming down the pike. And so we want to, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about any clear cutting, you know? And I actually, and we talked about this before, I feel strongly that we should also support the towns on this too. So I'm going to, I will be attending that. And I can let you know what the outcome is and just what, what the next steps are. I do know that the town, the town of Pittsburgh Attorney has done a lot of the legwork legally on this. And so Bill said, you know, we're more than welcome to join and, you know, see what they're doing from a legal standpoint. So I just wanted to kind of give everybody the heads up on that.
Can I comment on that?
Oh, sure.
Can you please publicize that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just got the information. So absolutely.
Not, not just to us, I mean.
No, no, exactly, exactly. Yep, you bet. Also, the Galasano Institute, the energy audit is going to be starting, oh, Dorothy, it's in a couple of weeks, isn't it? They're going to be coming to the building and, you know, assessing our HVAC system and insulation, you know, all of that. So just a heads up, that's going to be coming down the pike. We already mentioned about the engineers from Canal Corporation taking a look at the erosion. So we're aware of that. Highland Planning, Dorothy and I had a Zoom meeting with one of the senior partners of Highland Planning. They are an urban planning group. Renee, you're familiar also with that organization. I think you've done some work with them as well. And they are sending us some information or have sent us some information. And we're going to send that out to you all so you can review it. It is an application that they have developed called Instant Input. And it's interactive. Our residents, we can all download this application.